Meeting call to order. Today is Tuesday, June 6th. It's now 6:22 PM. Town Council meeting. It's a town council on 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Roll call. Note for the record that Councilman Luchardi is absent. Councilman Messier,
Yeah.
Councilman Borchet,
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson,
Here.
And Council President Godwin.
Here.
Form is declared. Ordinances. First reading of ordinance 2023-15, amending Appendix C, traffic ordinances, handicap parking at Cross and Street.
Move the ordinance.
Moving second. Al is here via Zoom. He was actually at the doctor's today, so he asked if he can participate from Zoom.
I'm here. I'm here. Good. This is a request for handicap parking at 3032 Cross and Street. At your last meeting, a Ms. Marsha Salt appeared before you. She is the caretaker at that property. She came to Don and went over the fact that the people who live there have handicap cars, stickers, and they were asking that the space just in front of their house be marked for handicap. The traffic committee agreed. I spoke with Councilman Messier about it. He was agreed with it. So we're just asking for handicap parking for that particular residence.
Any questions on that? Any public comment on this ordinance? Bearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
First reading of ordinance 2023-17, amending Chapter 4, animals, sections 4-1, 4-29, 4-30, 4-35, 4-50, and 4-145 of the Code of Ordinances.
Move the ordinance.
Moving second, Al.
This came about, we had, Paula received an application for someone who wanted to breed dogs. There's, when she came to me, I, I thought they could do it, and I found out that our ordinance previously said that in order to breed dogs, you also had to have a kennel. Only people with kennels could do that. If you don't have a kennel, you are limited to what they call a hobby breeder. And a hobby breeder can only breed 20 dogs a year or three litters. So this particular person wants to go into the business of breeding dogs. I went to the state statutes, and when I did, I found that in order for us to split our present kennel provision up, I had to go to two section, two different provisions. One for kennels, or three actually, one for kennels, one for breeders, and one for hobby breeders. In addition, once I got into the state statute, I realized that they had changed a lot of our law, our ordinance. So the bulk of this ordinance is bringing our definitions in line with the state, bringing the process of breeding, business breeding and hobby breeding, and kennels, separating them. And once I got into that, another thing that jumped out at me was service dogs. Our prior definition of service dogs did not comply with the service dog law. So I went through and I made all the adjustments. I'll call it the definition of service dogs. In addition, we had, we had restrictions on where dogs could be allowed. I, with the change in service dogs, I brought that into, brought our ordinance up to date so that those restrictions would be in compliance with state and federal law for service dogs. The third area, David called to, called to my attention, that we had a provision in here that certain types of animals were prohibited. He knew of someone, and I know of someone, who has one of these protected types, this type of animal that is not prohibited. For example, someone can have a snake as a pet in a cage. So instead of just prohibiting people from having that type of animal, I changed it to say that the animals, including the animals listed in the section that prohibits A through G can, as long as they kept confined, and therefore personal enjoyment, they're allowed. So we're not going to have pets, pigs, running around the street as long as the pet pig is kept confined and as a pet. So that, those are the changes that have been made in, in the animal regulations. It primarily brings us, and enables people to have a kennel, to breed dogs, to breed dogs as a hobby, and it brings the whole section in line with the present state law.
Any questions for Al?
So the only question I would have, Al, is that I know that, for instance, Roger Williams Park Zoo on occasion will visit a school and bring an animal. Are you saying that that can't happen based on Section 429? Which says no animals are allowed in school yards or on school property or any town-owned recreational facility property except for so-called service animals as defined above?
I would think that that would be an educational exception.
Okay.
I mean, and realistically, nobody's going to enforce this on that situation.
Should we, should we, I mean, I feel uncomfortable setting something that we're just going to ignore. I mean, could we, I mean, what's the point of doing it? I think we should make some kind of an amendment to that.
I guess, I guess we also, and I would question, did we ask the schools what their policy is just so we're not in conflict with what they say?
I'd be happy to contact whoever you suggest, and whatever language they would like, I would add that on. That it's a, that that particular, particular thing is okay.
Okay.
So is that something we, since it's the first reading, we can add it to the next amendment?
Yes.
Yes. When it comes back before you, it would, for second reading, it would be the same heading that I've given you as amended.
Now, just, just for clarification, would that prevent a circus or anything coming in also? Because we've had circuses here in the past.
I will work, work it out for the amendment.
As far as Section 435, a lot of people didn't realize prohibited animals were rabbits, fowl, poultry, pigeons, snakes, pigs, minks.
Poisonous snakes.
Well, the original said snakes, but, but again, what I have come to find, and I have a relative plus other people, I've received a call actually from a friend of mine, Ward Five, that they have a domesticated pig. It's yay big. It's, it's like a dog. It goes in, it goes out, does whatever. Sometimes it might escape, but again, it's, it's, it's a pet. And we found that it was supposed to be not deemed to be a pet, but it's been a pet, family pet for a few years. And I know some people got pot-bellied pigs as pets, and they're domesticated as well as a dog. So I just found it interesting. I brought it to Al. And again, rabbits, I mean, how many people buy a rabbit for their kid for Easter or whatever it may be? It's not really supposed to be. So that's why I was questioning this section of the ordinance.
Who should I contact at the school?
Probably the superintendent's office.
Okay, thank you.
Al, maybe an easy way to just put a line in there, you know, something to the effect of can't have any of the other animals on these properties unless you have permission from town manager or something like that. Now, if there's a circus, it's
Or the department head or something.
The department head or yeah, something like that.
Of the school, as long as you get permission from the superintendent or the principal or some, yeah, you're not just randomly bringing a
I think there are actually some classrooms that have a, a class pet.
Definitely, definitely. For sure, a bunny, I know, for sure.
That's not him, but a bunny is possible, certainly.
It might just be something as simple as a line, you know.
I'll just work with the superintendent's office to make sure they're happy with whatever it is.
Thank you.
In the, in the breeding aspect of it, I know I asked the question, were they planning on breeding one dog that many times a year? And that was, the answer to that question was no. It was multiple dogs. They have three, I think. So that's, that's what brought the limit on, as you said in the ordinance here. Because I was, I was very concerned that they were going to do that to one dog all year long, if they could even do that. You know, I was a concern. I did bring up, I got that answered. Any other questions? Any public comment on this ordinance? Just come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Caitlin Spaziano, 58, Woodside Ave, West Wallack. I'm actually the one going for the breeding license. We do have a kennel in our backyard that we had built permits and everything, you know, through the city. DEM was looking for zoning. That's why this all came up, because I needed permission of zoning to be able to breed. Not as a hobby, you know, hobby breeder, to get the actual breeder's license. So that's why we had brought the two guys.
Would this ordinance cover the zoning aspect of it, though?
I believe so, but I'll check it out.
It does say zoning ordinance.
I also came in case anyone had questions that I could answer. But the main, the main thing was the zoning.
And again, it's not one dog, you're just
No, we have multiple. Yeah. Yeah, we don't breed them more than three years and their whole lifetime.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Bearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
So yes, pending the new amendments.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you again, Al.
Thank you.
We'll get some rest now.
I got one more coming up.
Sorry.
Business licenses. Will you market license renewals, pistol and revolver license renewals, and hawker, peddler license renewals?
Approval of the licenses.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion on the new licenses? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. The approved ones, Church of Christ the King, Fairpoint Congressional Church, Albert Anderson, Aquadis Company Retail Gun Shop, Heritage Gun Shop, and then New England Frozen Lemonade.
With New England Frozen Lemonade, asking for a friend.
Oh, it's just, oh, it's just a truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that, isn't that, I remember that happened, is Al still on?
I remember, recent, recent, I know it was, what, a few years ago that the state approved all of them, and we, they didn't have to get individually approved by the town. Didn't that happen like about four years ago?
Well, they do have a mobile food establishment license that they get through the state. Depends on public property versus private. New business, adoption of the fiscal year 2024 wastewater treatment facility budget.
Move approval.
Second, moving second, discussion? Who wants to go over this?
Final numbers. I'll defer that to Tony. He's our numbers expert. But I just wanted to reinforce the fact that I, you know, I think the team that's assembled really took this to heart, not only last year, but especially this year, as the significant majority of our, of us are ratepayers and taxpayers, and treated this process like it was our home and family budgets. Taking, taking a lot of the factors into consideration. And, and I know, you know, myself personally, when you look at this type of things and you, you know, things break down and happen, that this is a facility that provides, you know, for the health, safety, and well-being of our community and even broader community. So, you know, in your personal budget, when your car breaks down and you can't afford it, you know, does it sit there? And you use a second family car if you have it available to you? I mean, in my lifetime, that's a definite yes. Or, you know, do you take out your credit card and charge something at a much higher interest rate? So we took those things into consideration when we built this budget and tried to continue what we started last year on being responsible and trying to set the facility in a broader sense, the town, up for success, knowing that, you know, things break, you need to pre-plan. We all know that the facility was essentially replaced after the floods of 2010, and the normal lifespan of much of that equipment is, is coming due for replacement. And as things were brought up before, there's, there's maintenance and inspections that need to happen based on those inspections. We're applying for significant amount of federal grants that will require us to come up with some co-pays. So we're trying to be very responsible in setting ourselves up to have the resources, not only to do inspections and maintenance, but to hopefully benefit from the federal funds by having the resources on hand to be able to support our co-pays without dipping into the town resources.
Tony, mind just give the final numbers? We've had two public hearings on this.
Sir, good evening, council. So the budget before you this evening that we're asking for approval for sets the wastewater spending budget at nine million, sorry, I think I need the glasses, nine million, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. It would set the usage rate at four dollars and sixty-five cents per 100 cubic feet of usage, and we would maintain the debt service charge of one hundred and twenty dollars per EDU.
Any questions for Tony on that?
For me, you know, what Mark said, you know, everybody took it to heart. It's just, I don't know. I look at a lot of the residents of this town, and they're not making huge salaries. Price of everything's gone up. Taxes just went up. This is just another increase where I'm still confused where you wanted the forty-dollar one-time fee, but instead, in lieu of that, now I believe it's a twenty-four-dollar perpetuity increase. I, I don't, I don't see how that's makes sense. I'd rather see a smaller increase. I, I do agree there has to be some type of increase because of the infrastructure problems that are coming along. I just look at it as, as just a, to go full, full boat is just too much, you know? So that's, that's my question. I still don't understand the answers that have been given on it. And so for me, I'm going to be voting no tonight.
I, I believe in, we, as you're correct, Councilman, we had originally proposed as one of the two options, I'm sorry, a one-time EDU per EDU charge, which would have reimbursed us for the cost of that, that emergency repair we had over the winter. I feel, and please, I would ask the council to correct me if I was wrong, I feel after the first public hearing, the, the feeling was that that wasn't a favorable option to move forward with option two, which was the rate increase. That allows us to recoup a portion of that emergency repair and begin replenishing those unrestricted funds that were used for capital projects over the years. That account, and I know, Councilman, like you said, we've discussed it a lot. It has dwindled down over the years with, with that emergency repair. We're down to about 1.8 million. As the town manager mentioned, if we get those federal grants, our matches, required match is 20%, which is ballpark 700,000. So now we're down to 1.1. So this would, would continue to set up the facility for success, as you mentioned, down the road to address these infrastructure repairs that, and projects that have been put off over the years because of costs. But, you know, like we've discussed with the prior public hearings, it's, we're unfortunately at the end of the road with some of these projects, and they have to be done now. To give you another example, again, our UV project, I believe there's 36 bulbs left. Jeff, Josh, I'm sorry, Josh can speak better than this. There's 36 bulbs left, and Josh can get into the technical end of it. We can't buy the bulbs anymore. They're not manufactured. We would have to go on, I believe, at one point, look at eBay to see if we find them. The UV system needs to be updated. These are just, that's just one of the projects that we're going to have to address, and that one's going to be a near-future address because of the issue of getting parts, just as an example, Councilman.
No, and I understand all of that. I just still don't agree with the full increase when it went from 40. And I know the time changed from the 40 to the 24 and all that stuff, but I still just think it's, it's too much. That's going to be ongoing, not just, if it was this, all right, you're just going to do it this one time, and it's 24. All right, you know, maybe I can go with that, but this is 24, and the next year is 24. And then if there's an increase, a percentage increase, and that 24 is now a little bit more, you know, so it just keeps building as time goes on. And to me, I just can't continue to hit the taxpayers, the ratepayers with, you know, I'm not, wasn't happy with, with the town's budget, but I really didn't see much room for any more cuts there. And we're sitting there looking at a total of $55,000 being cut out of a $13 million, sorry, $13 million budget, I wish. Hundred and thirteen million budget, you know, it's, I just, for me, like I said, I'll be voting no tonight.
Any other questions for Tony, or Josh, or Mark? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eyes have it.
Thank you, Council.
Amendment of Resolution 2013-180, Appendix B, fees and charges.
Move the resolution.
Second, moving second.
This is strictly adding a $100 plus advertising fee for breeding to our fee schedule.
Any questions for Al on that? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Authorization toward the 2023 roadway improvements bid.
Move the authorization.
Second, moving second, discussion, Mark?
Last week, we received the bids for our 2023 roadway improvement project. It was a two-part bid that included some CDVG projects as well as continuation of a town portion of the projects. I'll defer to the director if he wants to share specifics, but we're recommending to go with the lowest bidder, which was Cardi Corporation, for the total bid of slightly under 2.2 million dollars. The funding we're proposing would be available from our West Warwick Capital Reserve Fund, which is a little more than 44,000 from the council water improvements, just under 194,000 from residual road bond from the 2015, and encumbrance of slightly more than 807,000 from American Rescue Plan funds, and encumbrance not to exceed just more than 1.3 million from community developed block grants for the 2023 roadway rehabilitation projects. These funding sources include $200,000 for in-progress work for the rehab, rehabilit, excuse me, rehabilitation of roads within the Kent County Water Authority project.
Good evening, Council.
Yeah?
Please allow me to give you my professional opinion in regards to awarding the 23-11 for the paving for the town of West Warwick. I believe that we should award the bid to Cardi Corporation for the following reasons. They are the lowest bidder. I have a fantastic working relationship with the men and women with Cardi. I believe that we can successfully work with them and get a quality product for the town while remaining fiscally responsible. I do recognize that there have been issues in the past. I believe that some of the issues were ours, and some were due to them. It is my belief that the involvement of multiple companies in the past have constituted to some of these problems that led to the issues that we had, as well as the time of the year that the product was put down. I have personally inspected, excuse me, I have personally inspected the work that has been done by Cardi for Kent County Water Authority on Coyt Avenue and now Monterey-Ponderosa, and the work is of high quality due to the time of the year that it was put down. In closing, my recommendation to the council is that we continue our working relationship with Cardi and award the bid for 2023-11 for the paving for the years 23 and 24 to Cardi.
Any questions to Jeff? I know, I, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was going to say, I had a little conversation with Jeff before the meeting started tonight, where I honestly, overall, I'm not happy with Cardi Corporation. I look at a lot of the roads they've done, and we've had issues with them. One and one to Sycamore, it's still not fixed. You know, you got it, you called them last fall, it's still not fixed, and it's just going to keep getting worse until it does get fixed. Lonsdale, I think, is, looks horrible. Other roads they've done very good on, you know, it, they're, they're hit or miss. And I just, I don't know, for that kind of money, it just, it shouldn't be hit or miss, maybe miss once in a while, but I don't know, 50/50. It's just, in my opinion, it's not good. For a hundred thousand dollar difference, the second low was bitter. I mean, why not, why not see what they can do?
And, and I don't disagree with you. In some aspects, you're absolutely correct. Some of the, the roads have been in question, and some of them have been very good. But if you look at the time of the year, that the roads that are very good were put down, they were put down in the right kind of weather. Now, some of the problems we did have the first year were, we didn't get the money allotted till August, I believe it was August. So we were under the gun with some of that. So yes, you have streets like Wakefield Street that didn't get done till mid-November, early-December. Same thing with last year. We did have a problem with getting moving. So you look at Shady Hill, Quaker Drive, and all, and all those areas, they were done in December. Should have just had the binder put on them. They got completed. And you can't pave during the day when it's 30 degrees out. We know that. It's, it's, we all know that. We're not oblivious to that. But the roads that they did during the season that should have been done, such as Andrews Avenue, West Street, and, and those streets, they came out very well, as, as, who had said to me today, Coyt Avenue, that's flawless, if you, if you ask me. I mean, I've gone up and down, and I've got out, I've looked, I've walked it with Richard Henkla. It's flawless. There is nothing
Are we, are we going to like, make sure that then when they do the roads this time, that they're done during the correct times then, and not
Yes. One of the things that we didn't have, or that I couldn't find anyway, is something holding, whichever company we decide to go with, or in the past, hold them to a contract that holds them to specifications. We have that now. With myself and Glenn, we're going to be out there on every road. We have to split up or stay together. We, they will be held to the contract, to specifics. Whatever company we decide to go with, I will be having a meeting with them first thing tomorrow morning and letting them know that, one, and I'll, I'll have the town manager there if possible. I'm not going to handle substandard work. I'm going to hold you to everything that's in that contract 100%. There's going to be no variation from it. Now, I understand weather. We can't control the weather as far as rain goes, I get it. But I want roads done by October, by October 15.
There's nothing to hold them for, like the roads that Councilman Borchet
Yeah, there are, there is. And, and they are going to, like I said, they are going to fix Sycamore. They were trying to get Monterey-Ponderosa and all that done. The Councilman is also correct. I've been in contact with them since, you know, probably the first of the year, actually, by the time they got done with it. We went out there, Glenn and I, and we looked at it, and it was unraveling. But that was done, probably, I think it was the 17th or 20th of December. It was cold. Shouldn't have got done.
And, but that's the stuff that, I mean, we
Part of that's my fault, as, as the Assistant Director at that time, Director, Acting Director, and part of that is their fault. They should have known better also. So I'll take some of the blame for that, but they are going to fix it. And I told them, it's not going to be a patch job where you cut it out and you patch it. You're going to reclaim it from that point down to the corner and repave it.
It's still going to have a separation from the rest of it.
Well, they're, regardless of what you do at that point, yes, you're going to have a seam there.
But that's the point. It's still going to be a seam there. It's still going to be, now it's going to be a seam this way, not like the horrible one that goes up the middle of the road. So in the coming winter, when the plows go over, that seam is more susceptible to being ripped up. So in a year or two, we could start having holes there again because it wasn't done right the first time.
I don't disagree with it. They are responsible for it for one year now.
Right, one year.
Right. And that, that is up, I believe, like I said, December 17th to December 20th.
Right. So after that is
Then we're responsible.
Then we're responsible, and I just don't see how it's going to last
Correct.
for any decent period of time because of the situation. And on top of it, I mean, they start late. When did they open their asphalt plants this year?
They opened at May 14th, and come to find out, from what I was told, no. I, I can't answer it truthfully as far as anything else, but I was told it was due to plant maintenance. They had to
Plant maintenance, again, if they didn't run so late into the winter, they could have started and had better paving season. Again, if they didn't run so late into the winter, they could have started and had better paving season in this in the spring.
Yep.
You know, when did all the other asphalt plants open, a lot earlier, you know, early April.
April.
Yeah, so it's like they lost like a month and a half. You know, so I again, I just, I don't see.
I completely, you know.
The difference between them and the other company is a hundred and two thousand ninety nine dollars. I mean, it's a lot of money, but same time, if we're gonna get work that we have to fix later on within a short period of time, then. I don't.
And I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, but the other companies, we don't know where we're gonna end up with them either. Sometimes, I what is the quote, the devil you know is better than the devil you don't.
I know, but if you keep sticking with the devil you know, you never find out if it's actually an angel on the other side.
Are you confident that they can get this work done in a timely fashion and they're not running around on October fourteenth? To get, finish up certain jobs, I mean.
I will, can I guarantee it? No, am I gonna do everything in my power to make that not happen, myself and Glenn, yes, we are. I uh, I don't want any paving done, period, after October fifteenth. So we have to pay attention and maintain what roads we're gonna open, when we're gonna open them, how we're gonna open. None of the roads that we have in here, including CDBG, are huge, long roads.
Right.
There's nothing, I mean, I think the. Uh, one of the longest roads we have to do, honestly, will be, uh. Long Avenue.
Another question.
No, I was just, I, so, yes, we had more than a few bumps in the road.
Absolutely.
Two years ago, clearly not happy with, you talk about, and I, and there were other companies involved, and that makes. You know, a lot of this happens.
Sure.
However, Tanglewood was not to what we expected.
Nope.
And they handled that entirely, so I just wanna. Ultimately, it's your call, I we, I don't know that we should micromanage, I will say that I do wanna hear from Elaine, I see her standing in the back, I do wanna hear what. What she thinks, because it is not just CDBG money as well, so.
Mark, Mark brings up a a point of the uh, the next in line was a hundred thousand dollars more.
Yep.
Uh, I have talked to two communities um, that have done work with them.
Yeah.
And not one bad thing to say about them, matter of fact, ranted and raved about them.
The second, the second bidder.
Correct.
Which is, uh.
It it's, it's Miozy, but they sold out to Peckham. They're they're using a Miozy name, but it's Peckham. Um, totally different organization that was originally there from the past where you got.
Two thousand six.
Correct.
My my other concern is is, and I maybe, this was before, because there was two different companies, is like, I know, obviously Wakefield Street was one. Two years ago, and then last year Main Street was like torn up for.
Yeah, and both of them, and and I've had the conversation, and maybe you were involved with it, I'm not positive. Um, and I'm not gonna bash any companies, I refuse to do that, but uh. That product that was put down on Main Street and Wakefield Street, in my personal opinion, is not for this community. And the reason I say that is because there's too many manholes, too many water gates. It's not a project, if you wanna do that in Borreville where there's nothing.
What you talking about the product?
The Golden Place?
The the one that was in between and that.
Correct, you you know, if you're out in Borreville and you're two inches above the side of the road, nobody cares. In West Ward, if you're two inches above the side of the road, you're over sidewalks.
Yeah.
And that's a problem, you have no reveal where the water can have a channel to run. So, in my personal opinion, again, I I think it's a great product, but it wasn't for this neighborhood by any stretch of the imagination. And that led to some of the problem, because from talking to Cardi and talking to Indus. Indus has never really worked with Cardi, and Cardi's never really worked with Indus, so they didn't, they didn't know the products.
Probably not gonna again either, just my guess.
I agree with you.
And this, and the second company, you said they sold, they sold, but I mean. You would like to think that there'd be some carryover with, especially if they had positive reviews from the other communities.
Yeah, I I received, uh, I can honestly tell you, I did not receive one negative comment.
What were the, what were the communities?
It's not a recent sale.
Confused, actually, so I think what Jeff is saying, it's a positive thing that it's been taken over.
Yes, oh, oh, yeah, yes, it's 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 a, uh.
I thought it was just an unknown when he said.
No, 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 it's a whole different company that bought them.
So there was some two thousand six history with Miozy, so that's, it's a different Miozy.
Right.
Different owner.
This company's out of, I believe it's. In Massachusetts, they're out of?
So clarify, the the reviews that you got from other communities were old, older reviews?
I just talked to.
Were from the new company.
Yeah.
North Kingstown, um, they did, actually, my neighborhood where I where I live, and um. Flawless work, really.
I mean, I mean.
They had nothing, nothing bad to say about them, and neither did the other community I spoke with.
I mean, do you do you think that it's, even though it's more money, that it's worth it for for that extra, I mean, because a hundred thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things, if it's gonna. Save us a lot of headaches and and possibly more money than that down the road, I mean, you you're the expert.
Do I think it's a bad idea? No, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'm looking at the the bigger picture as far as where we are. As the budget and everything else, I'm trying to get the best product I can for the, obviously, to stay fiscally responsible for the town.
I get that.
And like I said, I have a a very good working relationship with Cardi. I have never worked with any of these other companies. Now, I know sometimes the friends you never met are the best, your best friends, I get that, I understand that. Um. I just feel that at this point, we can work with them, we can get done what we wanna get done. We can get a a good product out of it for.
If if we were to choose this other company, is Cardi still gonna go back and fix those streets?
They don't have a choice.
Just wanna make sure.
They don't have a choice.
Wanna make sure.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have a choice in that matter, they have to uh, honor, honor the prior. Like I said, they have it for one year.
I do have my concerns, and some of my concerns is I know Potter Ave was a big discussion last year, it was supposed to be done last year. I see on here granite curbs. Last year was a twelve month to eighteen month wait for granite curbs, but they bid granite curbs. Are those roads gonna get granite curbs, or are they gonna change the same, sorry, we don't want, we don't have granite, we're gonna slap concrete in?
If they bid it as granite.
That's a lifetime versus twenty five year.
Absolutely, and they bid it as granite curb, they will be putting granite curbs in it.
But I don't wanna, we we awarded granite curbs last time, and midway through, they said they couldn't get granite curbs. So this, and Potter has to be done by July thirty first.
That's right.
Okay.
It has to be built out by July thirty first, that is correct.
And if they can't get granite curbs, which should have been ordered last year, but they ordered concrete, and they still never showed up. They wanted to do it in December, we said absolutely not.
Elaine and I got together, because they were pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, and Elaine and I got together and said, no, you're not doing it now, because it was just too late in the year. And we'd ended up with uh, some of the same issues we have on our other roads, that is correct, yep.
And I, and I only see seventy five hundred dollars worth of granite curbing, which I find amazingly cheap for. Considering I saw the emails from last year, for for Potter Avenue in Goff, that's.
Some of the curb in on there, correct me if I'm wrong, Elaine, when we went out there, some of the curb, and they're gonna reuse that out there, some of the granite curb.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what you, you know, but, I kinda like it, so, but I wanna hear, I wanna hear what you think, because it is.
Concern is we have to get Potter Ave done by July thirty first, and Spring Street must follow immediately after. We are on a tight timeframe because we couldn't get it done last year, no fault of our own.
And and I just wanna, I'm not sure everybody understands, because if we don't, we lose the money?
We will lose that money.
Okay.
Now, since they bid, are they responsible, I mean, because they bid this now, or?
They did bid it, but there was a contract, and they had to start within a certain amount of days, and they defaulted on that.
So are they responsible for refunding, even, I mean, I mean, if they don't get it done by then, who's responsible for that? And.
And there's no, there's nothing that we can get out of that, since they defaulted on, I mean. And what about this contract, will that have a provision?
There's no, or, in this contract for Potter Avenue, there's no. There was no provision at the time for, uh, you know, Elaine and I knew it had to be done by July thirty first, but I don't believe there was anything put in there that said you had to have it done by.
Okay.
Like, there would have normally been, I mean, this is last year, so normally you would have thought for a year and a half.
Now, even now, if you if you take a look at it, I don't care, this is just my. Uh, I don't care who we end up going with, whether it be Cardi or it be Miozy. Uh, the chances of exactly having it completed by July thirty first with all sidewalks, this is tight.
But it doesn't, it doesn't.
Believe, uh, we said it had to be, the final billing had to be done.
It doesn't have to be completed, when get, when this final billing comes, it usually.
You would get a bill before we actually, yeah.
By July thirty first.
Okay, all right.
That is gonna be a tight window for whoever gets it, so that's why, whatever we decide tonight, it has to be a meeting in place.
Should that be a s- a different company, instead of having that worked in with everything else, should we have somebody just concentrate on those that are gonna potentially?
I did talk about that, we talked about possibly talking to the contractors of who could get the road done first, and. I thought that was not a good idea to do, so we didn't.
So, one of the things I wanted to do, and I know I had a brief conversation with Jeff last week and uh, Glenn. Was to break this down by road, so we can award maybe to a couple of different companies, instead of Jim and all these roads onto one company into this. But based upon the way the bid process went and how they fed it back, it's it's almost impossible to do.
It would be a nightmare for both of us.
Nightmare, really.
So, I I'd like to hear your opinion.
Yeah, and I respect their opinion, so I, you know, I'm not.
Personally, I I have not had any issues with Cardi, with the exception of Potter Avenue from last year. The years that that we worked with them prior to, I found them to be very professional, they were on time, they submitted all of the proper paperwork. With respect to CDBG and prevailing wages. Last year, we had a major problem getting Potter Ave done, part of it was the curbing, and we agreed to go with concrete. And then it it was one excuse after the next as to why they couldn't get there, it was either broken down machinery, or they were tied up on another job. And it just got to the point where between Jeff and I, we decided the time of year was not.
We had the water main break two up in one five.
So we had to push it off to this.
Some of the problem, I don't. Some of the problem we also had was, um, the gentleman that was in charge of our town last year, as far as the representative from Cardi. Is no longer with them, be. Is no longer there, so the gentleman that we're working with now, who took his spot. Um, I do have a fantastic working relationship with him, he's he's a great guy, he's been, to this point this year, and we know, all know the situation. Very receptive, everything that I've asked him to do, without question.
So.
It's it's, it's one of those things, in my personal opinion. You you.
So, uh, uh, do we have a plan B? Should we award this to whichever company, and we see that they're not starting on time, and there's no way. The last thing we wanna do is forfeit the money that we've been awarded.
We we can't forfeit the money.
That's exactly right, so, so what what, how do we make sure that that absolutely happens?
Well, here's the thing, if we, if say we decide to, or what, you decide tonight you're gonna award it to Cardi, and Cardi, um. Comes to us and says, you know, we can't start that until July first, well, now we know there's no way they're gonna get it done by, it just, it's physically impossible.
So, I guess I, so, so if we say, if we say Cardi tonight, and you get, have a conversation where that can't happen. Then we have to wait till the twentieth and we award it again, so.
Right, but what happens if you do the same thing to the next company and they say the same thing?
You're running out of time no matter what, and I think what you want is more information in that contract that's gonna protect the town. But the companies won't sign those types of contracts, because they'll say there's too many variables about supplies. Years ago, there was an issue about the liquid asphalt out of Canada, that when they bid on it, it was twenty two dollars, then it jumped up to sixty beyond our control, so.
I mean, but this bid just was opened.
Right.
You know, last week.
The bid specs that were written up, um, and Elaine can testify, they they, they were very, very, very clear on everything. That can be done, there's there's six hundred pages.
The question is, if you awarded the contract tonight, in the best case scenario, can they get that road done without forfeiture of the money? And then the second question would be, in the worst case scenario, can they get it done? Because you're right, they're gonna, no matter what they say, there's always an issue regarding things that they have no control over that comes into play. So, that's what's gonna happen.
Unfortunately, that could happen with anybody.
It could.
Not just, not just the people, yeah.
It it, how would would we be able to say, we'll award contract to Cardi, Potter Street has to get done, if it's not done, the rest of it's null and void. I mean, I.
And I have asked this question, to be totally honest with you, uh, in the past, if if we awarded it, decided to water it to Cardi tonight. Would it be smart of us to sit down, we look at the contract, obviously, we have to have a meeting with them tomorrow, whoever gets the bid tomorrow to get them started on projects. Period, there's no excuse.
Correct.
But would it be smart to sit down and have something else written up? Regardless of the company.
But we just, we just had a five minute conversation on Potter Street and July thirty first, and why are we having that conversation is because Cardi. Put us in this situation, so why would we wanna award a company that put us in this situation where we have to struggle with no matter what company we go with? I don't understand why we would do that.
Yeah.
They didn't care about us last year to get this done, why should we care about them this year? Yeah, it's, but again.
And how much is the CDBG grant that we would lose if it doesn't get done?
How long of an extension would they usually offer in that situation, potentially a month, two months?
I mean, think about it, this is not like this was awarded last year, this was awarded, you know.
I I agree with, there isn't one person up there that's saying anything that's wrong, absolutely not. Like I said, going through the bids, I read through them thoroughly several times, I talked to David, uh, several times. Uh, I was, like I said, going through the motions and going through and then trying to be fiscally responsible, knowing. The quality of work that Cardi normally does as opposed to what they have done. If you go out and look at those roads, again, we have a small sample this year, it's only been three roads, four roads, excuse me, that they've done this year. And that was for the water department, but a fantastic job, really. I I I can't say anything negative to this point. Now, I can't promise you two months from now that it's gonna be the same, I can't promise you two months from now with the other company, any other company, it's gonna be the same.
So do we know what other roads Cardi's working on for the Water Authority, and where do we stand in that line?
I have, uh.
Because if they have four or five other roads that they have to do for the Water Authority, and we're behind them, the answer's no.
Well, all they have left, as far as I know, for the Water Authority is where they are right now, on Monterey, Ponderosa, Bayberry, and, um. Cedar, sorry.
So you say, all they have left.
They're just about finishing them up on them, they, two of them, three of them are done, they have.
Twenty wheel is going down.
Yeah, they they, uh, they're moving right along, they really are. Um. But, like I said, we had this conversation, we're gonna tell them they gotta get going. It's it.
They normally don't do this.
Again, I can't.
Jeff from Mark, you're suggesting Cardi, you're suggesting Cardi, you're suggesting Cardi, you're putting your names on this. You know, I I hate to say it this way, the last two directors put their names on stuff and left, and then we couldn't even hold them accountable. And I don't think you're leaving.
No.
But I don't wanna be holding, you know, I don't wanna be here next year scolding you for this.
Yeah, I I don't, right.
Of the information that we have with them, neither one of us have worked with Miozy.
I'll I'll work with anybody that you guys, uh, wanna work with, and I know I'll have a a great working relationship with them. Myself and Glenn will have a fantastic working relationship with them. Um, like I said, I talked to two other communities. On North Kingstown, I I actually, I I had to tell him, listen, I I gotta go, because he was just going off the wall on how great they were.
My neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it came out excellent.
Tell you what, we never worked with you, Jeff, until you got here and you did a great job, so, I mean, you do, you don't work with somebody till you work.
Like I said, regardless of who I work with, I know we will be fine. Uh, so, if if that's the route you guys wanna go, I'm behind you a hundred and ten percent, and uh, but we have to get the ball rolling. At eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
So can.
I think I'm in, I mean, I think I'm leaning towards Mark here, and we.
Let let me, so there is no way, and this is a question for you, Tim, that we can bifurcate this bid at all to.
You'd have to start all over again, because you have to let the other parties have the opportunity to bid on the segregated or separated pot.
Well, they, it it came in priced by by road.
Right, but the bid went out as a total effort, not piecemeal. So if it was done four different ways with four different uh, areas of town, with a different price in each area, you'd have a better chance. At surviving any type of litigation, but since it's all, all or none, even though it's broken up differently. My only question would be is, if the dead, if the the deadline is July thirty first?
For Potter Avenue, yes.
All right, uh, what, if any. I mean, inroads can we make with the federal government regarding, if in fact, if it's, the bid's been accepted and work starts, and for whatever reason, can't get finished. What efforts can we get to seek an extension on that July thirty first? What efforts can we get to seek an extension on that July thirty-first?
Well, I think Elaine said that she has a good relationship and she'd certainly reach out.
But there's no, there's no guarantee on that.
No.
Are there any representatives from the companies here?
With with any resources? This question, has precedent been set in the state of Rhode Island for American Resource Recovery Funds utilized for road work where uh, federal government has given an extension to any municipalities that you know of?
I haven't heard of any yet.
I I don't go with that.
Separate CDBG money.
Right, right. American Rescue, the question would be is what's the likelihood? If the town has done everything with their power and authority to get the job moving, and for whatever reason there is delays, would they be willing to give us an extension? And should we be working on that now while obviously the other parts go?
How however, I think the sense of urgency in like getting a shovel or a tractor there within the next week.
Oh, no, no, I mean, once he's, it can both work at the same time. Someone's gonna contact American Resource Recovery and say the ton of West work is done X, Y, and Z.
It's CDBG. It's different. So we're talking about CDBG, CDBG money. Yes.
The only community development block, man, I'm sure.
No, no.
The only other question I have is I'm I'm not sure exactly how big, uh, Miozi or Peckham, if you will, is as a company as far as, you know, the equipment they have and the amount of uh, work they already have as opposed to taking on more work. I I don't know. Uh, we do know Carty has multiple crews to move in and out. There is a certain crew I'd like to see and like to have, and if we decide to go with them, I'll make my feelings known on that.
It's unfortunate that.
It is.
That they're not here because we would have a lot of questions to ask them. If they were here, it would make it much.
The truth is, if either one of them showed up, they would have gotten the contract, probably.
And the thing is.
The fact that they're not here speaks volumes.
The questions, a lot of the questions were asked last year. But, just like you, if you own a business and I ask you questions, there's only so many you're going to answer because you don't know where the thing, especially a construction company, you don't know where things are going. So it's it's.
It it's still Bob Knox, yeah.
Yeah. It it is still Bob, and and I've dealt with him a few times this year with on Monterey and, uh, um, other things, and, uh, he has been receptive. I'm not saying he wasn't receptive last year because he was. Um, but it's just, it's.
We had some issues entangled with in general, yes.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. Yes.
Yes.
And like I said, that the person who was in charge of our community is no longer with the company. Um, the person that I've dealt with for the last year and a half is the new, the new man.
So each of these bids contain the resume. Is that the person who you'd be dealing with? I mean, so, no, it's not.
No, no, no.
Okay.
All those are. We're gonna be mostly dealing with the people that get their hands dirty every day and are out there on the jobs and and one of the things regardless of um, who we decide to go with, one of the things with the meeting that I would like to, I'd like to have the same form and whatever company on the job all the time. We can't be having this form out there today, that form out there the next day, this form. Because one hand doesn't know what the other one's doing regardless, and and we end up with a big problem. So, right, right. So whoever we end up working with, there's certain things that we're gonna have to specify, and we're gonna have to hold true to them regardless of who we end up going with.
So, and again, I don't want to beat a dead horse. The fact that the bids, you say it's all one, but they actually were bid non-CDBG and CDBG. I, so I.
I'm just, I'm just weighing out. Well, it's, so.
I I understand what you're saying.
But 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 they were separate bids. If you look, so so the CDBG bid is for this particular company is one million, two sixty-three, seven thirty-five. The non-CDBG is one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, five, five fifty-four. So they are separate bids, CDBG and non-CDBG. I I'm looking at the bids that were sent to us.
They've broken up as non-CDBG and has the road, has the road names on top, too.
That's right. Yes, the actual bid form is for CDBG projects and non-CDBG.
When they combine it and they put your bid in, do they combine it?
Well, it comes down to total for both.
I think Jim wants something.
I'm sorry. Hi, Mr. Engineer.
Um, if you look at the, I don't mean to interrupt you, Jim, but I was just trying to, if you look at, uh, right, Carty was the lowest with CDBG and yellow.
Okay.
So, then that's where you get into trouble.
Right.
When you go to one versus go, I believe the basis of war is the combination of both.
The document that says bid form, for example, for for another competitor, it combines both CDB and non-CDB, you know, money for the total amount. And I think if they each did that, that's the bid form, is what they're gonna work with.
It does say total for both.
Yeah.
Basis of award is on both of them.
If you have two bid forms, one for CDBG and the other for none, you you have a better shot of avoiding.
That's what we have.
No, no, we have a bid form that's combined.
Yeah, it says it right here.
It's the total of both projects.
Separate, yeah.
But like Jim just said, when you put it all together, they bid that total amount, and that's what we're we're voting on, is the total amount.
Different quantity and different paths. So you have to put that there. It seems to be, they only had so much money. Our project had so much money for so many specific, which were different.
Correct.
That we find. However, the bid is based on the combination of both. That's the way bid documents were.
I would suggest in the future they not be prepared that way, just just to to avoid the the.
And if there's a time constraint, put the time constraint in there also in the bid.
But that wasn't in there with rank and strength?
Right.
All is good. That's the key.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, they're upset. He, uh, we did, uh, some of them, we had a good time. They're telling me, we're there for that. We measure everything, and they don't.
So do you know what they have on their plate for West Wallbrook? Uh, but here in West Wallbrook? I'm, okay. That that's my. So tha- tha- that's my point. Do you know of a number of jobs that they have in front of us when we sign this? That's my, that's my issue.
I was told, um, by conversations on Monterey and stuff, uh, and they've asked me, you know, if we'd awarded the bids or whatever, and I told them, no, we haven't done anything yet. And, um, they have told me, you know, we wanna get going as soon as possible. So.
I do know that, and that's, I tried not to talk about that, but I do know that. Yes.
And and I, I, believe me, and I told Elaine.
We should factor in.
I told Elaine I went online the other day and I I looked all that up. I I I looked at everything. I really did. Um.
The only other thing I I will say, we've always brought this up in the past. One company's out of Mass, one company's out of Rhode Island.
It it makes a difference to me as far as last year, we know how everything went, and to be honest with you, and I'm not making excuses, but I was only one person. So I couldn't be on every job at the same time, which really hurt us. We have myself and Glenn now. I don't plan on, you know, we're on the same page in this. We don't plan on letting anybody, whoever takes it, opening up more roads than him and I can handle at the same time. Uh, I'd like us to be together out there on on separate areas, but, um, sometimes that won't always work out, but we're not gonna do three, four, five, six roads. That's not, we just, it can't be done. I don't care who the company is.
All I know is Sycamore, Shady Hill, there were some of the worst roads in this town. And they're not much better after being repaid.
And and I have to be.
And they're gonna be back to what they were in a short period of time because it was probably done.
And I have to be honest with you.
I just don't see us spending that kind of money to get back to poor workmanship. And then we, now we're up to twenty minutes of conversation on potters, and it's the fault of Cardy's. It's why do we reward them?
Oh.
Would have been.
Okay. I'm I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah, they're just the owner ship is from Massachusetts. They're working out of, uh, West Davisville down in.
Oh, down in.
Yeah, they have a plant down in Davisville. Like I said, I I I am willing to work with whatever company is decided. I I don't have a problem with it. I know we'll we'll work well together. I just put forth this because I was trying to be, like I said, fiscal responsible and.
And I do, believe me, I do appreciate that. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, especially when it comes to asphalt. I mean, it it it's a good chunk, but, yeah. But at the same time, if it's poor quality work, then it's throwing away money anyway.
I don't disagree with you. I don't.
Me, I personally would rather not reward Cardy's with putting us in a situation around considering a lot of the roads that I've seen that are just not done that well. In that, right.
Both concerned.
Absolutely.
Now, keep in mind, too, the work, i- i- if we decided to go with Carty and and let's say something happened where you know, the receivership went through and they went to fuck, the bond company, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, the bond company would pick it up and they would have to finish the work. So regardless, the work would get done. There wouldn't be a work stoppage, so to speak, where you got half, you know, you got the road milled, but it never got paid. The bond company would have to, and that would be with any company.
But the bond company won't pick up if the work's not done by July thirty-first.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we lose the two hundred.
Yeah, I didn't hear.
It has nothing to do with that. They won't.
I know, but that's my point is, again, we have this July thirty-first deadline. We're we're struggling with it because of one company. And no bond, no, we can't.
Any company.
Any company, to be honest. No, no, I'm saying.
But that's why I brought up the granite curb.
If it was done last year, but if it was done last year, it could surely suppose that we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Don't, let me, let me just correct something. They were coming in in end of October, early November, and the weather was changing quick. And I said, I don't want concrete poured in in December, no. No.
Yep.
Yeah. They, they actually, yeah, they actually said that they were gonna put the, um, base coat on and leave it for the winter, and I said, absolutely, don't even start it. And I I put a stop to it. So I I will defend that aspect. I said, don't even start it because it's not fair to the plow drivers, it's not fair to anybody in that neighborhood, water runoff or whatever. Who knew the winter was gonna be as good as it was?
And, uh, as good as it was, and yet the road on Sycamore is so bad because it's done in December, but, um, I'm sorry. But if they opened their asphalt plant a a month and a half earlier, they could have gotten to potters by now.
Well, that is also true, but we weren't under contract with them at that point to to do it.
I imagine if they're here in West Wallbrook, they're gonna use the crews here in West Wallbrook, not gonna move them out. That's my guess, but I'm not running the company, so I can't speak.
I mean, again, to reiterate, if 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 one of the two companies were here, we could ask the question because I know the Potter Ave and the and the timeliness of it seems to be one of the major sticking points here.
Like, and that's gonna be the major sticking point with whoever you pick.
No, I understand. I understand, but at least if somebody was here, we could get a maybe a like, yeah, we're gonna, this is gonna be a priority. We're gonna get it done. You're gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna lose out on this two hundred thousand, two hundred and whatever thousand dollars.
I I don't think whoever we pick, to be honest with you, again, Carty, Miozi, whoever, I don't believe you're gonna lose out on that money. They're gonna do everything in their power to get it done and the the hottest part of that road is not the paving, it's the sidewalks and the curb. And you're gonna do all that and get that all set before you can pave it anyway. You can't, you can't go in and and put binder down and then pull curb and and replace it. It's not gonna work.
Any other comments for the council? Any questions for Jeff, Elaine, or Mark?
Need a motion for whatever. Is there a public comment on this?
Resolution, isn't it? But again.
It says authorization, but it's a rev.
If, um, I need a motion for whatever.
Well, the resolution actually says award to contract to Carty Corporation. Yes. No, I I know that, but that's what the, that's what's been moved forward and seconded.
So, I'll take a vote on that roll call. We gotta move it first.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded the whole thing has.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll take a roll call vote to be clear. Mark?
For Cardy's? No.
Okay, no.
Mary Beth?
No.
A motion.
I would make a motion to award the contract to Miozi.
Second. Second, any discussion?
We have to, we have to put the amount that's listed in it.
Yeah, we have to change. Yes, I'm sorry.
I can tell you what they are.
Total amount of two million.
So their bid, so their bid amount is two million, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, uh, and forty dollars. Uh, and then the fiscal breakdown would change to the American Rescue Plan being nine hundred, nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, which leaves the two hundred thousand dollars above the bid for the in-progress work that we have going.
We need to move it again without us, that just as amended?
Well, you're not, you already passed on the initial.
Okay.
But it's Miozi in the amount of, I think, in the amount of two million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand and forty dollars. And, uh, the resolution would change the American Rescue Plan funds to be used from eight oh seven, three twenty-nine to nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine, four two eight, point two eight.
You seconded that. I did second it, correct, yes.
Take another roll call vote, Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
My vote, yes.
Thank you.
Good luck to keep us updated.
If for some reason they should tell you tomorrow morning, there's no way that they can do it, can we do a provisional, actually, now that I think about that? Wait a minute, because we can't, we, two weeks is a.
We put the bid out. They tell you they can't do it tomorrow. There's no, you did not know how it's been.
Yeah, they didn't know it.
Potter Avenue.
Yeah. But that's two week, we'd have to have an emergency because that's two weeks. We can't wait two weeks. Because there's no way on the twentieth you could get it done.
Tomorrow morning, I'll be on the phone anyway.
And if there's any hesitation, Jeff, and and Elaine, if there's any hesitation, we need to.
We'll have a special meeting to get this.
I'll come up to, uh, up to the office in the morning, and Elaine and I will do it together.
Make sure that you you guys are comfortable entirely. I, we're expecting both of you to, yeah, yeah.
If they can't, we come back here at nine o'clock Friday morning or wherever to get, wherever we need to come back and get this done.
Yeah, we have to come back Thursday or whatever we have to do.
And and.
Oh, you have to, forty-eight hours, yeah.
We had no idea the deadline.
Nope.
No.
Elaine, would it be worthwhile to make a phone call now just in case to say, listen, we had a big debate at the town council meeting last night, and the concern is the ability to get this done. What leeway do we have?
Or do you, or do you have a contact to call them after hours tonight? I don't know if that's possible, but.
No. You understand, yeah. Thank, thank you. Thanks, Elaine. Thanks, Jeff.
Resolution authorizing payment for the services of the police navigator clinician from opioid settlement funds.
Move the resolution.
Second, move the second.
So traditionally, over the last two years, we've funded the our police navigator through American Rescue Plan funds, where the guidance is now coming in for the use of opioid settlement funds, um, specifically for the abatement of the opioid epidemic. Um, so we're, we're working through that now. I just received that from the Attorney General's Office. They supplied me some guidance, so I'll be going through that over the next few weeks. But one of the first things we want. But one of the first things we wanted to do since we're approaching the new fiscal year was to request to fund. The police navigator, who, as you're all aware, was first embedded within the police department. In the midst of the opioid epidemic to be following up with overdose victims um and their. Supporters to make sure that they have the services lined up um to make our best effort to re. Do our best with the epidemic and save lives. So I'm proposing. To fund our first expense out of the opioid settlement funds. Um to encumber eighty eight thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars for the salary and fringe benefits. Of the police navigator who works for the Providence Center.
But this would like obviously just be for this fiscal year. Then going forward, I don't, I don't know the amount we have in that and the opioid settlement funds. Is that something you're looking?
So right now, we in the bank, we have slightly more than three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Um and there's four separate cases that all have different. Payments coming in, like the distributors were scheduled to get. You know, in in the twenty five to thirty thousand dollar a year area for eighteen consecutive years.
We could, we could potentially be funding this position for multiple years going forward.
Correct. And obviously, as I go through the guidance, not that it's on the agenda for time, but as I go through the guidance. We'll be working with our social service agencies to come up with um good abatement efforts that can be monitored. And uh put our best foot forward.
And that's what this money really should be used for. I mean, you know, these people, you know, a lot of people died because of. Opioids and, you know, we can prevent any, then that's what we need to do.
And we said when we, this goes back to, was it twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen when it first came before us? When we had the group of people when they were doing these things, and one of the questions I asked was exactly that, like, this money, if we get it, should go towards.
So it's starting to roll in. Again, the guidance is is coming in slowly. Many communities have waited to get the guidance because we're not sure what. The definition of what they consider as abatement. We don't want to overextend, but I agree, we don't wanna sit on the money because it could be doing some good and and saving lives. Um in addition to, um I'm exploring. We don't have the internal staff to be able to. Set up and receive applications and monitor that and do internal reporting. I'm gonna work with Chief Verone to see if we can do something with the EMA internally um to supplement. Uh a part-time staff member to help us with that. So that's coming in the near future.
Well, we'll never know how many lives we save with this, you know, but if we didn't have it, we might see how many lives we lost. And so I I agree with that.
Yeah, in this position, I mean, chief, chief, you don't have to speak on it now, but we've spoken many times. This position is invaluable to the police department. Our previous position was as well, which was probably seventeen till twenty-ish. And then we had that, we actually had elapsed, and I think. There was a lot going on with COVID, but you know, had things been different, we probably would have at that point, I would have brought it forth, that we wouldn't have had that gap. But I'm glad that we have that position now. It's super invaluable to this community. And a lot of people ask um what the navigator does, but the navigator is. It's invaluable to helping the police department with not just overdose, but mental health issues. Um a lot of, you know, the homeless issues, a lot of that stuff ties in there too. So it's an invaluable position to have in this community. And we're one of. Maybe what, three, four in this, I I don't know how many in the state we have now, but not a lot.
Personally, good to watch that individual in action and very professional. Deals with very difficult people at times. And let me tell you, I was very impressed with what I saw that day, so. I think, you know, if if it's me who sees it, I'm sure other people, I don't see a lot that goes on. In that police cruiser or whatever they run into on a daily basis, so. But when I did see it, it was very professional.
Could you remind me, is that navigator currently in the budget for the police department? Okay.
I anticipated doing it this way.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we did not budget for it. Yes, okay.
It's just a different line item. It's been because because.
Originally, we, you, years ago, I forget which year, had proposed setting aside sixty thousand dollars in the police budget for it. So we did that for at least one year, probably two. And then the last two fiscal years were out of American Rescue.
Okay, okay, so it's a whole separate.
So that expires June thirtieth.
With that being said, the opioid settlement funds. I believe every city and town in the country deserves some sort of settlement on what what they did to. This country, this world. Any other comment?
Wait, wait, we're in the middle of a vote. One second.
Wait, you're going on the road bond stuff? Come with the public comment.
All right, so motion second, go ahead.
All in favor?
Come on back, Jeff.
No, no, save it for, we'll we'll save it for the end.
Um resolution awarding support funds to the West Work Assistance Agency.
Move the resolution.
Second.
This is just the formal resolution to approve the. Usual donation of six thousand dollars to the West Work Assistance Agency, formerly known as the Food Cupboard.
Any questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Proclamation honoring Centerville Bank's one hundred and ninety-fifth anniversary.
Move the proclamation.
Not sure if you'd like me to read it, but. The uh Centerville Bank is celebrating their one hundred and ninety-fifth birthday. They're having a party. On Friday afternoon, assuming their backlot and in their facility. That I'll be stopping by to pass along the town's well wishes if anyone wants to join me. Uh so there's a seven, whereas that acknowledges all their. Work. I can read it briefly if you like for the record.
If you'd like to. Whereas.
Sure. Whereas the West Walk Town Council is proud to pay tribute to the Centerville Bank on the occasion of its one hundred and ninety-fifth anniversary celebration. And whereas Centerville Bank was founded in eighteen twenty eight by textile manufacturer John Green and surgeon Sylvester Knight. And whereas in eighteen sixty-one, when the National Bank Act became law, the bank's leaders were granted a National Bank Charter. And whereas Centerville Savings Bank Incorporated in eighteen eighty-eight allowing for broader banking services. And whereas in nineteen oh one, Centerville National Bank and Centerville Savings Bank relocated. To a new building on Main Street, West Warwick and the Arctic Village. And whereas the bank celebrated its centennial in nineteen twenty-eight with the opening of its new headquarters at twelve eighteen Main Street, where it still stands today. And whereas Centerville Bank now has several branches throughout Rhode Island and Connecticut, I'll therefore be it resolved. That the West Walk Town Council would like to hereby congratulate Centerville Bank for their one hundred and ninety-five years of faithful service to the residents of West Warwick. Pay special tribute to Centerville Bank's commitment to the community. And be it further resolved that this proclamation will be made a permanent part of the records of the town council of the town of West Warwick.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Centerville Bank, for everything they do. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, eyes have it. For the record, Councilman Messia just had a family emergency. Again, a lot of these lately, I hope everything's okay with everybody.
All right, uh discussion action. Town financial assistance for the West Works Steelers.
There's no resolution, there's no.
Well, there are representatives here from the league, so if you wanna just come on up. Again, I I announced at the beginning of the meeting, Councilman Lichardi is has a family emergency tonight also, so.
Um I'm Mike Golden, I'm the president of West Works Steelers. Um I've been talking to Jay a lot about it, like, we're just trying to get like the same help that all the other sports teams get. Like, I know we're on a private field, but we pay for everything ourselves out of our own funding. We fix our own bathrooms, we paint our own concession stands, we get our own equipment. We have half our lights on the field that are broken or out. So that's a big expense. Um this year coming up, as our last year, the crump, the vets are gonna allow us to use the basement for all of our storage. So that would be a Conex. If we get a Conex or we build a building down there, there's a lot of things that we have to go through through the vets to get that. And just to put out there, like, if something happens, what is the town's plan for us to have a field? Since that's never been an option, like the town didn't have to give us one, but if Crompton ever did take that from us. Where would we go with a hundred fifty to three hundred players, parking, lights, working bathrooms?
Like, I know we looked at possibly trying to fix the lights down there, but because it's private property, we couldn't do that at the time. And we still can't do that. Um town can't put money into the actual infrastructure of the private property. So.
So would we have to get a letter from that? Like, I don't. My thing is like, it then would the town have a field for us so you can actually help us out? Like, I mean.
I know there's discussion earlier in the year on this. I know um I think you guys met with Jeff to see what the options are. If you're no longer allowed at Crompton. Yeah, but I, but again, the winter, I know personally, my discussions with them was they don't have a problem with the winter.
Yeah, but that like, so so I'd like, we had a green building that we had all all of our tackle coming in. The town's supposed to be knocking that down, so now we have no room for that equipment. Now, we were told this year that after this fall season, we lose the entire basement, so we don't have no room for a hundred and fifty helmets, a hundred and fifty shoulder pads. Chair uniforms, practice jerseys, anything like that. We lose the whole basement. So now we have the green building that's getting knocked down. And the basement that's getting taken away, so we have nothing down there. So, you know, like, uh when Paulie LeVick was the pre- past president, the town helped us with half our electric bill. We haven't even done that since two thousand and eighteen. So like, I I I'm just speaking up for football, like, we're one of the original sports, if not probably the oldest, and we have little to no support. At all, whether it's a private field or not. So if we can move forward and find a field for us, then that'd be better, since that's the only way it seems like we're gonna get any help.
So, again, I don't know where the field discussion ended. You know, we gave ideas.
We went and looked at the soccer field, but I don't know if that's an option. Um it it has to be a big field. It's not for game days. We get to high school. Put in for that, we get to high school. So it'd be for practice, but you would need lights and, you know, we have five tackle teams. And five cheer teams. That's ten teams that are down there from August to September. September, the girls go inside. So it'd be just the five tackle teams, but those teams exist of sixteen to thirty-six kids per team. So it'd have to be a big field. It's, it wouldn't be like multiple little fields. The the small baseball field that spring got could fit one team there and they couldn't like. Do anything besides drills. It's it's not enough to like throw a pass or or run scrimmages on team, team versus team. It was just a small lot that they helped out, and half the time we had to go to North Smithfield to use the field up there. So I just wanted to like bring it to the attention. I've been down there nineteen years. I played there, my son went to there. It's it's a. It it seems like the only way we can get anything done is to move from there, because if we can't get our lights fixed, that's, we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for that. If we're losing.
We pay for the dumpster, correct?
Yeah, the dumpster, yeah.
We do.
And I know the request for electric would come to Washington, we would approve it. Now, if we don't get a request, we don't go looking either.
Well, so I wish Jay was here for this, but I think that it was an agreement that it was only like a two or three year thing.
It was.
And then two thousand, when I took over as president, that's when I had to look and find out. Last time we got anything was from two thousand and eighteen. So that's right. And then, you know, I I got our numbers. If anyone asks our numbers, what's the percentage of town players from us work? We're at seventy-eight percent from last year.
That's in the, that's the fall league.
Yeah, that's that's the regular West Works.
Right. And and that that's what we're talking about, because my understanding is that the spring league is more of a. Ocean State Steelers, yes.
Like maybe thirty percent tops, because you you make cuts. Like, this is first come, first served. You pay your own team, you play, just like any other sport.
Need the lights on in the fall when you do the spring.
Yeah, like it summer and maybe to like it ended September, we stopped turning the lights on dependent. We tried to get out of there early.
And where do you play your games, Mike?
Uh West Rock High School. Well, home, the home games, way games. You get allotted four home games, maybe one preseason game and.
At at Mazznicki Field.
I know. I know behind the high school and the lower soccer field there, you know, I don't know why we. I mean, I I'm sure we need school permission, but that's probably half. But that's that's a conversation we can have with them. But there are no lights.
Yeah. See, and I'm not saying that, I I'm just, it's a hypothetical thing, like, what if this, like, every year. We're losing more and more, so I just wanted to put it out there.
So Crompton Vets is saying that you can't have the basement, the fall, the fall league after the.
This is the last season we can use it. And the the green building, I don't know if it's knocked down yet. It's supposed to get knocked down, so now we lose two storage areas.
Well, let me ask you a question. That green building, can it be rehabbed?
I don't know. It's been, all the water goes to that one spot. All the water from the parking lot goes to that one spot, and just each way the building, each way the the ground.
Are we talking about the consent, the old concession stand?
The old, like, maybe the baseball, it's the green building on on the field, like, right behind the fence.
That's the old concession stand.
Yeah. Yeah, the concession stand's fine. We we fix that. We take care of that.
No, but we we there, but there is, there is town property that goes from the parking lot to to E and B Smith. So the question would be, could we resurrect some sort of storage unit there? To help the leagues, you know, I I don't know. You know, that's. No, but on on the property, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, on on at the end of the parking lot, from E and B Smith down, there's a. Percentage, there's a footage in that was that we. Yeah, but if I'm talking about, I'm I'm talking about if if they taken away the storage, letting them use the field. Right? And and if we can put some sort of storage on town property, could that rectify storage anyway?
The other.
I'm just coming up with.
Soccer as an example, the the two um Conex boxes that they have, they pay for them.
Yeah.
We don't pay for them.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't pay for anybody's storage. Let me rephrase that. I don't know that we pay for anybody's storage because nothing comes out of my budget for it. Um so.
Well, with with baseball, I know they have their little concession stands and huts where they can store their tractors and do whatever, but. If it's on, if it's on town property.
I mean, there there's something that can be done for sure.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't suggest.
Well, I I don't know that we're prepared tonight to make, I'd like to, I'd like to see a a a drawing of what we're talking about.
We'd like to please put this back on the next agenda so we hear from Councilman Lichardi who put it on this one because.
Yeah, I mean, I I just. What it says is town financial assistance. So Mike, you you've mentioned a couple of different things.
If the lights we can't get fixed, we'll have to figure that out. We'll, we'll, I don't know. I think it's like five hundred dollars a light bulb, so.
And how many lights are up?
Figure it out. Um and like the the Conex of storage, like, I know that. The town doesn't pay for that, but the town pays for the field. Town pays for the lights. The town pays for everything down there. So, yeah, you don't pay for their two rental fees. We pay for all the maintenance and all their buildings, their concession stands, all that's paid for the town. Whether it's funding or budget, we're not down at that field, so we pay for everything ourselves out of our own pockets. I don't know, but if you guys wanna put it back and I'll get with Jay and I'll try to get more information to help too, but.
Yeah, I I mean, maybe a drawing, maybe it just so we under, so I understand. I mean, I haven't been down behind Crompton Vets in forever, to be honest with you. Okay.
Are you able to email that map out?
Just so we, and and Mike, what what do you have in in a way of financials and and numbers and things?
We're not in season, so like all our bills are paid up to date, but like, you know, eventually we're gonna go down there and we're gonna have to. The light, we're gonna have to fix the lights now, event by from now till September somehow, because we we need lights on there. You know, a hundred fifty football players with half the lights that were, if those, that half still works. But I mean, the the pole, I don't even know who put the poles on there. I don't know how long they've been there.
Um the Army National Corps. Army Corps of Engineers put them telephone poles in way back in the day. I I got a history lesson sitting there one night and they told me who put the lights in, so on and so forth. Because they've asked me to fix a street light that's in their parking lot.
Yeah.
And it it's in their parking lot, and I'm like, it was weird because National Grid put it there.
Yeah.
But when we pride, when we went to our own prism, that wasn't part of the list, so it's not.
Like, that's in the parking lot above the concession.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, that's the question. So what what I would do is, and I I think Councilman Lichardi put this on. And I'm I'm only gonna speak for him a little bit, but I think he put it on so you guys can speak and bring it up to us, so he, you can make it aware. But I think meanwhile, before the next meeting, that you guys have a meeting with Jeff and whoever and. You know, maybe they can bring it before the Parks and Rec Committee or whoever, and and think about ideas of what they can do for it. You are right. The town pays for fertilizer, they pay for everything for all the other fields in town. They don't put anything per se into Crompton Vets.
Like, say, okay, we don't want you guys on the field, and then you just put all that money in there and you, I get it, I understand.
Put a bunch of condos in or something.
Lights on there. We we paid an electrical company to come put a new fuse box in because it was water damaged. There was water in all of it. It wouldn't work, wouldn't turn on, it kept popping breaker. So we paid for that to get fixed, you know, a few years back. But now, like, all the lights are out.
No, Crompton Vets has always been cordial with. No, Crompton Vets has always been cordial with, even when Little League was here, the first time around. You know, they let the town run, town leagues run out of the air and everything else. They let the football leagues run out of the air. It's, I understand. It's, it's becoming a sign of the times with expenses and everything else, but I, I, I know in the end, it's hard to charge a family more and more money every year, you know, where other leagues, soccer, basketball, baseball getting town support and you're not. We understand that. So we'd have to figure out what we can do to help support.
Oh, yeah, I'll get to that with Jane.
And a field. I, I, I don't know.
I'm not, we could never lose the field. I just wanted to.
No, but if you haven't, if you haven't lost it, right?
After like, hey, we're closing tomorrow. Someone bought this. They're putting our solar field up like.
That's all, by the way, that's all rumor. Solar field was started by one person and one person only.
But I don't know, like, that's why I just wanted to bring up, not they, you never had a conversation with me about that. They, they love us down there. We have a good relationship with them. All of our board members are members there. We do our fundraising there. It's just what if?
Uh, my, my guess is you helped to support them.
Oh, yeah. We do. We do the best again. I mean, at the end of the day.
That's what she's talking about is at the end of the day.
Into the evening usually, yeah. So, so yeah, if we could just have more information and understand more what's happening.
I didn't know he wasn't going to be here tonight until.
No, I, he didn't either. Yeah.
Yeah, it was two minutes.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Putting it back on two weeks.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
If you can get some information and what, what costs and so on and so forth.
Um, upcoming appointments. Sue, are you supporter review appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term? Sue, are you supporter review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term? West Fork Housing Authority, appointment or reappointment for five-year term expiring November twenty twenty-seven. Tuxit River Authority, appointment or reappointment for three-year term expiring June twenty twenty-six. And Planning Board, appointment or reappointment for five-year term. Public forum.
Um, public comment. Who wants to go first? Just state your name and address for the record.
So my name's Ken Wiley, forty-two Oakland Drive. So on the, on May fifteenth, I sent the council members an email. And then I dropped off, uh, some.
You got that last.
You familiar with that?
Yep.
A lot of people received that.
Yes, thank you.
So the reason why I'm here tonight is just, I'd like to make the request that my concerns get put on the next, uh, town council meeting for open discussion. It, it, so that's why I'm here.
You can, you can bring up all your concerns here. We might be able to answer them or not answer them. I know we, I think part of your concern is the ordinance we passed with the height of fences.
Yes, but it's, it's my understanding that uh, the, the neighbor at fifty-two Oakland Drive haven't, has not submitted any paperwork yet. I checked with the town, town clerk's office and I checked with the building officials office yesterday to see if she in fact did, uh, submit some paperwork. Because, uh, according to your, um, May second, May second meeting, a decision was made not to take her fence down. But after the twenty days grace period, she would be allowed to apply for an eight-foot fence to keep the fence. So, so, you know, I, I don't see it. It's not on this agenda.
So, so Mr. Wiley, we didn't put it on the agenda for a couple of different reasons. And I apologize. I probably should have emailed you. I didn't know if anybody emailed you or responded back to.
I received an email from Sarah, okay? And, and it said that, you know, at tonight's meeting, you know, wasn't the time to discuss my issue.
So, so when that ordinance was passed, it wasn't just about that individual. That was an ordinance throughout the entire town. Um, due to, we have companies that were putting up fences, uh, the condos behind West Valley and they were looking to putting up an eight-foot fence over there. Um, we have companies with eight and ten-foot fences at them right now. And it was more to protect it and approve those developments in, in those, those fences at the time.
And I get that. I get that because there's a time and place like La Croix is putting up all those condos with West Valley.
That's the one.
Okay. So maybe those neighbors need an eight-foot fence or a ten-foot fence there. But this eight-foot fence on my property line is an eyesore. There's not one person in that whole plat, in the Natick plat, that has an eight-foot fence. I, I, I got pictures that I submitted.
You, you sent me the pictures. You gave us the pictures.
Just the defense, but on, on January.
Yo, is that a vacant lot?
It's a vacant lot. That's exactly where it's, I cleared it. It's a vacant lot now.
Yep.
But back on January twenty-fifth, okay, we met in front of a zoning board. And the zoning board unanimously denied the variance usage. They applied for a variance usage for an eight-foot fence, fence, ex post facto. They just decided to put up a fence. So they put up a fence. And so that day, I, I happened to be going to, to my property and there's this fence going up. So I said to the guy, well, what are you doing? How far is this fence? He goes, it's an eight-foot fence. I thought, you know what the stipulation is yet? Oh, no. He, he goes, uh, I'm only the installer. So I called, I called the building official. They sent someone out to notify him that that was against the ordinance at that time. Okay? So, uh, in the meantime, uh, we had the meeting and nothing got done with the fence from the zoning board. So the fence is still standing. Now the new ordinance allows for the lady to apply for an eight-foot fence.
So if she put twenty-foot arbovites there, what would be the difference? I'm just asking. That's, that was, because that was an example that we brought up here because it's interesting that you can put an eight-foot fence and, and your lot is a vacant lot. So I, I don't know what you're planning on doing with it. If you're going to build, do whatever. I don't know, right? But when we talked about the fence, we talked about a six-foot fence and eight-foot fence. I use my house, my two-family house as an example. It's on an eight-foot wall. I'm only allowed to put a four-foot fence on it. My neighbor would love to see an eight, six-foot because his grandson uses it for a soccer wall.
Because it's a method of measurement. Right.
But now that ordinance kind of changes a little bit for me, but when we, when we looked at that, we said, what's the difference if somebody puts arbovites down the fence line and they grow twenty feet tall? You still can't see nothing. It's a privacy barrier. If they plant them properly and so far apart, it would be a future privacy barrier. So some of those things grow twenty feet tall. So what would be the difference?
Well, you know, it's from vegetation or from plants, from evergreens. It's a different perspective when you're looking at it. Than when you're looking at an eight-foot high wall that's completely out of place in the neighborhood. It, it's out of place. This one, the arbovites at my property and, and, and they're fine, right? Because they look good. This fence is just an eyesore. And, and, and the thing is, they put it up without seeking any, any zoning or, or any variance. They just decide to put it up. It was blatant disrespect for the laws of the town of West Warwick and the neighborhood at that time.
Just, just to clarify.
Hey, let's just put up an eight-foot fence.
Just to clarify on that, you said they put in for it, but were denied, but did it anyway?
No, no, it was done already. Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood. You said, okay.
She put in for a usage variance upstairs on August twenty-seventh.
And, and the reason it was denied at zoning is because there was no provision for anything but a six-foot fence. And I only know that because Mr. La Croix came to me to ask about, and, and that's when I found out that it had even gone to zoning. I was unaware of that.
Right.
Um, that's when Mr. Di Fiore contacted them and said, we think we're making a change. Hold on. The fact that they have not put in or submitted paperwork, that, that will be corrected tomorrow. And if not, we'll, we'll take whatever.
Contact them today.
Well, and I don't know whether that happened or not, but yeah.
Da- David.
Oh, there you go. Al Di Fiore is on the line. I am.
One of the, one of the reasons that the, that there have been no applications or those that have been submitted have been on hold is that in order to put the new ordinance into effect, we have to figure out what is the fee that is going to be charged for the work that the building office will have to do to handle these requests. I've discussed this with Mark and the problem is that the town right now is in the process of totally reviewing our entire fee schedule. So it was determined to hold off and not do, try to do a piecemeal thing for fences. So as of this moment, we do not have the fee scheduled for an application for a, uh, a higher fence. I am one of the members of the committee that these applications will come to. And so for that reason, no applications that have been filed have been processed and though, and there's those that know that that's the reason. Once we have a fee scheduled at that point in time, applications will, will be allowed to come in and the decisions will be made. But as, as of this moment, that is the reason that all applications have been held up.
Okay. So I, so what, what does the fees got to do with my eyesore on my property line that was incorrectly installed back on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two? That still doesn't do any justice for me. It's my property, my property with that fence on it is depreciating. That fence depreciates the value of my property. The fence is out of place. It does not belong in that neighborhood. And if you guys take a ride by, like I sent you in, in my, my folder, you're welcome to take a ride by. You can see that it's like, what's this? So the land, the land has, uh, an upslope to it. And now on top of that upslope, the neighbor places an eight-foot fence. So the pictures, the top of the fence is almost to the peak of their house. It's crazy. I mean, you got a fence in your eye, right? If you do, does it go to the peak of your house? I don't think so, right? So, I mean, that's where I'm at. It, it's just ridiculous. I, I don't care about arbovites. I'd rather see arbovites over there.
I can point out one of my neighbors that has an eight-foot wall and a six-foot fence above me. That's fourteen feet. Uh, it's a wall with a fence on it. I mean, what if they built a wall down there? Four feet and then put a six-foot fence up?
That's ten feet, right? I got that part. It's still out of sight. It's still out of place. Doesn't make it not out of place.
Are, are you develop, can I ask you a question? Because I know it's vacant land. I know it's vacant land. Are you developing it or is it just going to be a vacant lot for?
Well, maybe someday. I had the, the, the land cleared out. I sent you pictures of what it looked like and what it looks like now. So I spent money to have it cleared out and have it surveyed.
Yep.
So, uh, I would have to come to the zoning board to get it rezoned because it's, it, it was, the chart I got changed a few years back. But that lot has grandfathered rights to it from way back. We bought that, bought that lot like sixty years ago.
How many square feet is that lot?
It's about eight thousand.
And R, R what? R six or eight?
Uh, I think it's an R eight.
If it's R eight and you got over eight thousand square feet, you shouldn't have to come before zone.
Right. So, so I think it's an R eight. I, I don't have the deed with me. I got the deed.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's, that's my concern. You know, blatantly just disrespecting the laws. Now the law changes, right? So, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't negate the fact that they broke the law when they put the fence up. I'm, I'm like in a catch twenty-two situation. I understand that if somebody's, you're going to build commercial properties or condos and there's a time and place for a ten-foot fence or an eight-foot fence. There's a six-foot fence is more than acceptable on that piece of property. It's more than acceptable. I don't have a problem with a six-foot fence, right? But the eight-foot fence is quite an eyesore.
So Al, just correct me if I'm wrong. Now the individual that put that fence up would still have, should technically have to take it down until they come before zoning and get approved, correct?
It won't be before, as a, a fact, once the ordinance was passed, there was, the, the, it was decided that don't enforce the maker, take it down. And then possibly let her put it back up. That's.
That's, that's exactly right. Yeah.
That's what happened because if she had come before us at that point in time, we couldn't answer the question. We still can. So the point was made that why would the building official go out, possibly bring her to court, say, take the fence down? And two weeks later, come before the group, the committee who says, yeah, it's okay. You can have your ten-foot fence and put it through the expense of putting it back up. That was the basis for the decision and the delay.
Okay, okay attorney. Let's go back before this ordinance was even considered. If somebody puts a fence up, it doesn't get permission. Is there a penalty?
No.
Kind of way behind.
Well, that's why he did, he did ask to have this put on a. You might want, you might want to put it on the agenda because you're going.
So, so tell me this, Attorney Di Fiore. Can you tell me what constitutes for good cause and who makes that decision?
Mr. President, I think right now the question asked by, um, Mr. Wiley, you're going, you're going well beyond open meetings because there's no, no presentation, nothing against what you're asking. It's not, it's not properly on the agenda. So it's not really properly before you. You've given the information about the question you had about the ordinance. Uh, it's either you put it on the, uh, next agenda so you can talk about it. So.
Well, I'm, I'm going to be honest. I, I asked, I asked opinions on putting this on the agenda and I was told it's possible legal action against the two parties.
Well, that's.
That's why I, I didn't put it on the agenda because if there's, if there's legal action between the two parties.
We don't want to be a party to that. That's right.
So, uh, that's what your ordinance says. You know, they can have an eight-foot fence, but they need to show good cause. So I'm trying to figure out what is constitutes good cause. You know, here's, 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 here's a, uh.
They cut what they said to, to, what I got recollection of was a medical reason and I don't know what that medical reason is. I'm not going to get into that because that's not for me to sit here and discuss.
Right. And so that's why I want to open it up for discussion because what's the medical reason? I know he has MS. So what's, what's he going to say and, and what the rebuttal is? Right? So my, my rebuttal to the MS, I did research on Mayo Clinic dot com. Right? And there's some information on Mayo Clinic dot com that he's going to be talking about sunlight. So that's why I want to have it open for discussion. Because, you know, sunlight, sunlight generates vitamin D, right? Now, a lack of vitamin D isn't good for MS.
Guy, I spend one time a dermatologist because of this.
Well. You know.
I'm burnt all over this week alone.
And the other thing is, all right, it's sunlight, it's sunlight, it's sunlight. The guy's got a two thousand and four BMW convertible. He's got a two thousand and four BMW convertible that he drives all the time. Now, the other day I was working on my property. So here it comes. It's a nice sunny day. He's pulling up with his BMW convertible with a sleeveless, a t-shirt on, right? So where, where's the sunlight? Maybe, maybe this guy is, is a detriment to another driver. If, if, if the sunlight is going to impact him, it doesn't impact him when he's driving that BMW. So, you know, there's, now here I am in a catch twenty-two because you know, number one, he put up the, he, he just put up the fence without seeking any variance. But number two, the catch twenty-two is the town changed the ordinance, chapter five in a, in a, in a amended, which is fine, fences. But this was all prior to that happening. Now, the guy also put up a garage and there's no paperwork upstairs in that zoning office for one piece of paper for that garage that's in his driveway. So there's two things.
And again, that's not necessarily something that should come before the council clearly. And Mark, I would ask that you look into it with the building official, um, but it, but it is not an item that the council should have a discussion on. Yeah.
You know, you get it. But if you can see where I'm coming, it's just one instance after the next where they blatantly disregard the laws of the town of West Warwick. So now here I am with this eyesore that honestly, it's, it depreciates. So now here I am with this eyesore that honestly, it's, it depreciates that lot. If you were to put a house on that lot, okay, 8,000 square foot. So you put a house, you look out your window, what are you going to see? You're going to see a big white wall. So who wants to look at that? I'd rather look at a 10 foot Abba Bity. You open the window, nothing. I'd rather look at Evergreens to be honest with you.
Nothing would preclude you from actually putting Abba Bity along that fence, I don't believe, but
Well, the fence doesn't go to the back of the property line. So there is some Abba Bites after the fence. And that's another thing. Some of it's encroaching on my property, but that's not part of this right here. So my, my issue is the fence.
You put up all Abba Bites right up against that fence.
You'd never see it. That's right.
If you put Abba Bites right up against that fence line, there's nothing they can do.
Well, that's right. I, I, I mean, I got that part, right? So, but my, my deal is that fence shouldn't be there. It's out of place. It doesn't belong there. Nobody else in the neighborhood has an eight foot fence. And why should this customer, or why should this neighbor, the 52 Oakland Drive, who blatantly disregard for the law be rewarded or with the fact that he can have an eight foot fence? I, I just don't get it.
Again, I don't think anyone's going to condone the fact that they put up the fence without permission. I don't think anybody is. But as LD Fiore said, knowing that this was coming down the pike because a request came in from West Valley Condos, he, and I agree, don't, don't make them take it down and put it back up again. So that's a, the fact that paperwork hasn't been submitted, again, I, I will charge Mark with making sure that that does take place.
Well, then we could just, uh, because like Tim said, we're going way beyond. Maybe just put it on the next council agenda. And if Mark works something out over the next couple of weeks, then it would just, just take it off.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think it's a slippery slope. Do we going to get into every neighbor discussion?
Well, this is, he has legitimate argument where a fence is put up outside of our ordinance. So something, I mean, it has to be addressed. And that's what I'm saying. If Mark can address
May, may I comment on that?
Yes, Al.
The, the fact, the fact that the fence is right, right now in violation of the zoning decision. The next step would be for the building official to order it removed. And if it isn't removed, to bring it to the municipal court. The fact is that the decision was made to, to wait until the committee is, committee is established and not to make the person take it down, uh, and then put it back up. If the, if the, that person applies and the committee denies the request for the 10 foot fence, then the building official issues the order to take the fence down. If the fence doesn't come down, the building official takes it to the municipal court. The town council, in my opinion, should have absolutely nothing to do with this matter. This is a matter between the building official, the committee on the, the new committee that's been appointed and the municipal court. Uh, and as I said, the reason the committee has not met is we are waiting for the revision of the fees so that we can operate properly.
I, and I, I, I understand all that and I agree. I don't think this is a council issue. But if the, if the building official's office is not doing anything, then
The building official, the building official was not doing it.
Let me finish, Al. Let me finish. Because I know that somebody in Ward five, the building officials issued them something to have, to take a, a, a piece of property off their property because it's in violation of the town ordinance. But right up the road is a building that's fallen apart. And it's right on the main road that people can see and drive by all the time. And nobody says boo about that. So I mean, I don't know what our building official office is doing.
I, I will
Stuff goes and it, it, if they're not going to do anything on certain things, but act on other things, it's just not the way it's supposed to be.
I will take
Because this was already done prior to the new ordinance. Everything that happened before that should fall into place. Whether we like it or not, doesn't matter. That's the way things go.
I will take personal
If, if the, if a new law is created, anything happens before that new law still stands, correct?
Once again, I, I've got to say, you're going so far, you're talking legal issues now. As a private property owner, as somebody else's private property, there is relief he can seek administratively and if not administratively, they need to go through litigation. Right now you're talking about so many things. He had a question. He wants it on the agenda. If you're not going to put it on the agenda, then it's up to him to take the next step.
I asked to put it on the agenda. It was pretty much, no, it's not a council.
I'm not talking about tonight. I'm just saying that he asked what to be put on. If the council does not wish to put it on the, the agenda, then he has, he has to, uh, decide what he wants to do on his own. Like the town council cannot assist him. If he wants to bring in action against the town, he can. If he wants to bring in action against the property owner, he can. But right now, as it stands, this is a public comment matter. He asked for it to be put on. It's either not, but he's going to be left to his own means as to whatever the result is. And Al, Al laid out for him what he can do. But again, the town should not be in a position of giving legal advice.
And, and I would like to respond to Mark's question. And to clarify the building official, it was not the building official. I will take personal responsibility for instructing the building official not to take action until such time as the matter was fully resolved. So if you want to blame someone, it's me.
So, so I, I think the town, to have the town manager again, work with the, the building official, make sure. And Al, is it possible? I, I understand we want to, and I don't know where the fees thing is. But I know we added a cannibal fee today. So maybe we can put that on the agenda to make sure we have a, a, a fee.
I was trying, I was trying not, I was trying not to talk about it too many times.
Again, you know, Mark, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Wiley. I understand what you're saying. I understand all of this, right? But tonight, we just talked about taking down this fence and, you know, and the person put it up illegally. At the time, they probably know it was illegal. They hired a fence company, put it up. It was probably, they probably know the ordinance. I don't know. I can't speak for that.
You can't.
So right now we're saying, go take it down and then maybe have to put it back. They can come get relief. So why don't we just go to somebody's house, take their pig that we were going to do two weeks ago, take it away for two weeks and then we'll give it back to them a month later. I mean, we, we passed an ordinance tonight doing the same thing. We're going to take everybody's bunny rabbit and, or do whatever. Just because they had it there illegally in the first place, now it's not illegal.
You know, Mr. Goslin, you can't shoot yourself in the foot and then ask for relief. That's exactly what they did. Through their own affirmative action, they put up an incorrect fence.
I, I have seen people put sheds up, not within the 10 foot boundary line, not realizing you had to be 10 feet from the boundary line. And then come seek relief after they find out that they put the, the shed up in the wrong spot and it's already been placed, cemented, did whatever, anchored, followed everything that they thought they were following to code, but they weren't within the 10 foot guideline. Same thing with pools. We've seen that where they put pools in and then realized after a neighbor complained, I'm not 10 feet from the property line. I'm only eight. They've come and seeks relief.
I, I, I'm sure you've seen them all, but ignorance of the law is no excuse. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. It doesn't, oh geez, I, I didn't know I couldn't shoot this guy. I'm sorry. That's, you know,
I understand your frustration, Mr. Wiley. I, I completely do. But so I also look at it from all aspects of the, of, of it here. And I'm saying, okay, this, this person has had their fence up now going on how many months?
It's, it's 10 months, May 25th.
Okay. The ordinance was passed two months ago?
May 2nd. And then you had a 20 day, then you had a 20 day grace period. So that took you to May 22nd, which would after May 22nd would allow the neighbor to apply for an eight foot fence. Now, the decision, the reason why I'm here is because, because the decision was made by this board in attorney D Fiore to not to take the fence down, right? So how long, it does, answer me to this question. Does the zoning board's decision have any clout? Does it, does it, does it mean anything when they unanimously denied the usage variance? Or, or is it like just a kangaroo court? You, you, you go up before them. Now here it is. It was supposed to be December 7th, but it's January 25th, March, uh, February 25th, March 25th, April 25th. It was when the first reading was for the next ordinance. I mean, how long do these things go before the town acts upon?
So Mr. Wiley, during, during this, your, this 10 foot fence, eight foot fence, I discovered numerous places have eight and 10 foot fences. So are we going to be required, if we're going to force that individual to take it down, are we going to go around this town and tell everybody who has an eight, the 10 foot fence up prior to this ordinance to take it down and reapply?
Well, you got to see if they, they apply for, for usage variance when they put the fence up, right? But
I even copied and put a fence up.
To change the scenic landscape of a neighborhood, I, I, I don't, I, I don't think there's any value to that.
I didn't realize how many eight foot fences were up or 10 foot, eight and 10.
If you drive around Brookfield Platte, I'll take you. I went through every street on that platte. There is not one eight foot fence there, not one. I have many pitches. I grew up and down the street taking pitches of people's houses. There's not one. Except on my property line, there's this monstrosity white, the white wall. All right. So, I mean, that's my concern. And I don't think that fence belongs there personally.
Thank you.
I, I think, I think it got put up illegally and it, you know, why not just make them have a six foot fence? I'm okay with a six foot fence. Why not live within the boundaries of the law, like you were supposed to in the beginning? I, I don't care if the guy's got a fence, believe me when I tell you. But he needs to live within the boundaries of the wall like everybody else does in the neighborhood. We've been there 60 years. This is the first time that I ever had to come to this, to this council, ever, ever, ever. My entire life as being a West Warwick citizen, all right? It's, it's nuts. And it's not like I haven't gone above and beyond to make the place look better. And, and, you know, so and along with that, the guy's in a wheelchair, right? Again, nothing to do with this. I can't see the kids riding their bikes down the street. What do I do? I spent $7,000 cleaning that lot up. So he wouldn't run over anybody going down his driveway. Just in case there was a little girl or boy riding a bicycle down the street. I, you know, and it's on and on and on. I did my part as, as, as a good citizen. But they haven't done their part. They just constantly, constantly, constantly do whatever they want. Hey, let's do this. Hey, let's do that. Hey, let's put up an eight foot fence. Hey, let's put up a garage. It's a garage. The guy backs his BMW in there. And that's where I'm at. So you got to tell me, next step.
The town manager will follow up with the building official tomorrow if you want. You gave him your, I think he has your contact info.
Do you have it? Oh, Mark? You, you have my ad, my email address? Okay. Thank you. All right. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Just state your name and address. You can pull that microphone out.
I'm Rebecca Rala, from Factory Street, E3. I talked to you, Mary Beth, already, but it's been two months since Sue asked me to address and, you know, if anything has come about for us.
So there have been conversations, yes. And, and there's some information that we've gotten from the schools and, and Mark, actually, sorry, your to-do list is building. But we need to have, we need to make sure that that is being handled before school gets out.
Because who's out on this building, you know?
I do know that. Yeah.
She has a new knee.
That's a good thing. And she, how is she doing? Okay?
Excellent. She's driving.
So absolutely it has not been forgotten. There, my understanding is that there were some raises that were given. There were some that were skipped and, and they were trying to figure out why they were skipped.
We heard, we heard all different scenarios and Kenny gave us the last update.
And, and Kenny is retired, as you know. Um, so, so, uh,
Kenny and Chris were there. Both Kenny and Chris were there when they spoke.
And again, the, I think the business office is taking a look at, and I think Sherry, maybe there was some conversation with you too? To the schools. Okay. And they were, they were going back because there was some, there was some gaps, my understanding was, and I have not gotten the final answer on that, but, but we will, I told you when we spoke, we will take care of that.
Okay. And also I have these.
We, we will take a look at whatever the, whatever these are. And yes, I, I, yes, I will. Yes, I will. I will.
Any other public comment? All right. I'll let you talk after Alan. I'm going to let him speak from his seat. So go ahead.
Alan Palazzo, 5 Robin Lane, West Warwick. And regarding the streets, I checked with Jeff. I drive on Coit Avenue. I looked on Monterey and I complimented him on the company that did that because instead of having gaps on the side of the road, they backfilled it with dirt. It looks absolutely fantastic. And then I look on Sycamore and Quaker Drive and pardon my French, it looks like shit. And I, I was surprised when he told me it was the same company. So, you know, here they're there. They did a great job on Coit. They did a great job on Monterey and they should be commended for that. So that's part of it. Along with roads, uh, way back when I asked Mrs. Williamson when they were going to finish with Providence Street. She gave me a date of 14 December.
I think it was 16, but one of those.
Well, yeah, it was close. But the issue is it's still not done. And that's ride dot. And I have a great, uh, sign I saw. I was almost going to tell the chief, he needs to get them road closed as of Monday, May 5th for the next 15 years, because that's what it seems like West Warwick. Coesit was closed heading towards Ty Oak. Every Sunday, I, I can imagine what Jelz is going through because of what's going on. Now it was from the bottom of the hill past the condos. It doesn't seem like anyone knows when things are getting done. And that's a state job. So, and I went, you probably drove it down towards Clyde, you know, where do you turn? To try and go anywhere. It's all blocked off. So that's enough with the, uh, the roads. Now, with regard to our schools, some of you may have seen a story where the ACLU has filed against the West Warwick School Department. And I'm not sure if the town is going to be handling that. Is that going to be the school department? Question is, how much money is gonna, that going to cost the town? Because just looking at it initially, the ACU is smells blood in the water. And the town is going to have to pay for that. I'm not sure if, uh, our insurance would cover that, but the town is going to pay big money on that. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it. It's, it's out there. I can send you copies of the story and, uh, we'll go from there. Now, about two weeks ago, I received a letter in the mail from Fort Myers, Florida. It, all it had on the front was my name and address, the date that it was mailed from in Fort Myers. And it talks about what went on. And I have no animosity for you, Mr. Not. But the question said, people know me and I guess the whole town wants me to speak for them. And I will do that because I'm up here now to be on the record and it's D day. So it's going to be really easy for me to remember. Next year it'll be the 80th anniversary, which is really simple. But the letter was mailed by Mr. Frank Karpinski on the, uh, 25th of April. It was received by the town on the 27th. Mr. Goslin, Mr. Williamson and Mr. Not. You all, I know got it. Mrs. Williamson, when did you get this letter?
I don't know exactly, but I have a copy of it.
You have a copy of it via Mr. Goslin?
Uh, no, I believe it was Mr. Not.
Okay. Mr. Borjey?
I received mine last week when you emailed it to me because as usual on the council, I was not informed.
Okay. And my problem with this is I, I do my homework. And the verbiage in this letter comes straight out of the March 15th Retirement Board meeting. So I call Mr. Karpinski because I'm looking at why aren't the retired So I call Mr. Karpinski because I'm looking at why aren't the retired teachers? And why aren't the retired employees getting a cola? And then I looked at this and see, this is definitely whacking West Warwick. It's also raising concerns on the part of the Retirement Board. And I talked to Mr. Karpinski, who informed me that he was rather surprised by the application. He actually called an IRS auditor in to, uh, go over and make sure that this was kosher. But he also raised concerns. And the reason the board sent this to West Warwick is you guys are setting off alarm bells there. Specifically with regard to MERS, okay? He said that the resolution that brought West Warwick in was rather questionable. But the board said, yeah, okay. However, comma. He questioned the, uh, the data from the town with regard to how much is it gonna cost us? He said, it's sort of shaky. There's only one other community in the town that is as shaky as West Warwick with regard to supplying data for the MERS system. Any of you wanna take a guess? I'll tell you. Central Falls. So West Warwick is now in the same category as Central Falls with regard providing the Retirement Board with financial data. He also said that information from Ny Heart, which was furnished to the town, had some questions due to it. He said the basis of allowing West Warwick into the system was based upon questionable data. However, they're in the system, but next year they will have data that is not gonna be questioned. And if it's not, if you guys don't comply with the, uh, annual required contribution, you might just be booted out of MERS. This is Karpinski's words, not mine.
None of that's in that letter that you're talking about right here.
No, no, I called out because you know I do my homework.
So first and foremost, before, you did your homework, whatever. But I could tell you, we have a call into Karpinski and I'm still waiting for the meeting to be scheduled.
Who, who did you call?
Karpinski.
Okay.
The same guy who wrote the letter. We responded back to, we called, left the message, and we're scheduling a meeting to discuss the verbiage in that letter. Because the letter has strictly to do with one individual.
Right.
Not the entire pension system as you're reading it.
No, no. Go back and on the record.
One second, Alan. Because I called Mr. Karpinski also. Uh, before Alan did. And, um, what he said to me was, this letter, this information that's in this letter was not provided to them with the original packet. Had it been, he said, it's possible we would not have been accepted into MERS. He did clarify that with, he can't speak to the entire board. But the entire board was very surprised when this all came out after the fact. So.
And Mr. Goslin asked for contacting Mr. Karpinski. I called him in the afternoon. I left the voice message because I had a question regarding ESG, which I brought up to you guys, and obviously I don't think you followed up on that. But also about this letter, because it was a surprise to me. And this letter is public information. It's on their website. However. He, the secretary said, he'll call you back today. It surprised me when he called me back at nineteen hundred hours and stayed on the phone with me for almost an hour. Providing the information, I'm telling you now. So whether you wanna call him, whether you wanna go to Fifty Service Avenue and talk to him, that's your duty. That's your responsibility. You have a financial obligation to the taxpayers of this town. And as I said with regard to MERS, whether or not, uh, the data is accurate next year and the town will be able to afford the ARC and whether they're gonna take a look at West Warwick and say, buy, that's a totally different question. He also raised the issue of West Warwick looking. Just keep looking at me, Mrs. Williamson, because I got the data, okay?
Why wouldn't I?
He said, he said that you're looking at increasing the amortization from twenty years to thirty years. And that's questionable whether West Warwick is gonna be able to meet that. So you can sell the people any bill of goods you want. You can gaslight them, but get the information.
So Alan, let me, let me just clarify what you just said. I don't think it's been any hidden secret to anybody on this council that our pension system was in trouble. I don't think that anybody's ever denied that, have we?
No, no, and I, he never said it was. He said the informa-
Excuse me. Wait a minute, we as a council, when we went into negotiation to MERS, we as a council, everybody up here said, let's amortize, amortize it as long as possible. So we don't put it on the taxpayers on the front end and then we can expend it out to twenty-five, maybe even thirty.
He told me the information.
It's like a mortgage.
He said.
We didn't wanna put it all up on the front.
The information that was provided to the Retirement Board is shaky at best, okay? I'm not sure if he told you that, but he told me that. And he said the Ny Heart data, that you get your, uh, audit from every year. That's questionable. So I would look at another firm to be doing that. And the reason I'm up here now is thanks to Mr. Drew. The entire town is listening to me. It's on the record and it will be on the record forever. Okay, last item. I'm not sure if you guys ever, no, I'm not gonna go into taxes. Uh, I'll bring that up at the next meeting when everybody is up here. Because I have serious questions as to why some people are paying more than other people. Uh, what happened? Why it was done? And don't look, don't look at me, David, like you don't know what I'm talking about.
Taxes, been taxes your whole life.
I've, I've raised the, I've raised the issue once before. After the meeting, Mrs. Williamson came up to me and said, are you accusing me of anything? And I said, no, I'm just stating facts. And as Joe Friday used to say on Dragnet, just the facts, ma'am, just the facts. So hopefully people are listening. I'm getting tired of speaking for everybody in the town. I don't know what they're afraid of. Maybe retribution somehow. However, comma. I spent twenty-three years in the Navy, so anybody can come up here, speak their mind, and you have to listen.
Any other public comment?
I just wanna go back, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bert, you can yell from there. Five, five joy steps. Beautiful, uh. Thank you, Bert. Mark?
I just wanted to go back to the letter that Al was talking about. I will speak for Councilman Lichardi because he and I had a conversation. He didn't have any knowledge of this letter either. I've said it before on different topics. I am tired as a councilman of having to find out through backways what's going on in this town. I am sick of it. This came from Florida to a constituent of mine in order to get to me when the solicitor knew about it, the manager knew about it, the council president knew about it, and now finding out the council vice president knew about it. There's no reason why the council shouldn't be completely informed on these things when they come up. We had this thing that Mr. Williamson just sent us about Justin Santoro. I had no knowledge about that until he just sent that and it's resolved now. We're supposed to get monthly statements, what's going on and, and, and legal stuff. We don't get them. I just wanna be like treated as a councilman for once, you know? Be informed on what's going on. So I don't have to wait till a constituent comes to me. That's why I asked the sewer department, can you send me an email when there's a backup in my ward so I know? So they come to me, I have some knowledge of something. I'm ju, I'm tired of it.
So Mark, going forward, every letter I get, I will scan it, have Sarah scan it in and make sure the entire council gets it. But the reason why, the reason why I didn't, I didn't know where we were going with it because if you saw the letter, you read the letter. I had questions before I even brought it to the council because I'm not sure if Mr. Karpinski. And I don't wanna question him on his decision making there, but where did he get that? And, and obviously he's giving Mr. Palazzo a lot more information. He's giving the town, Mr. Palazzo, you know more about the pension system than the people running the town, including the town manager.
He took a phone call though.
Excuse me.
He, he called me back that night. He called and he called them back that night.
He has not called me back.
That's amazing.
Mr. Goslin, one other.
I wanna schedule a meeting with him.
You said, you said you don't know where that came from, that information? That is directly from the minutes of the March fifteenth meeting. That letter was.
The decision Karpinski made on his own is the question I had.
No, Karpinski did make the decision. The exec, the board directed him to do that. That verbiage is directly from section five of the fifteen March meeting.
Alan, it's pretty shameful and I, I'm gonna speak up on this. It's pretty shameful that somebody from that board probably mailed you that letter.
I doubt it.
Well, because if, 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 if it, I don't care where it was. I can postmark anything from anywhere. Again, Alan, the letter got a, the, the town got a letter from Mr. Karpinski. We did not send it off to the council because I asked Mark, how do you want, how do we wanna handle this? We wanna have a meeting with Mr. Karpinski to see what his feelings are. And then invite him to a town council meeting and go over the letter.
I said, Fifty Service Avenue. He's there. That's the office.
Yep.
So the letter is on their website. The minutes of the meeting are on their website. This paragraph is directly from section five of that meeting. And oh, by the way, he also talked about legal fees because we talked about different things. And he cited a case which I see you guys have been discussing for a very long time. It's been going on for a while. And that's, uh, the pension relating to that one.
So, so it's out there. And Mark, going back to your statement, there's many things that you've been working on that I don't know about. Okay? And then you put it on the agenda, wait a minute, wait, wait, let me finish. And you have that right as a council person. Okay?
Anything I work on in Ward five does not affect the entire town. This is something that affects the entire town. This is something that could have made it so we didn't end up in MERS. This is something that, as they said, they almost voted down what, what he wanted to do, what, what was done.
And that's why we wanna sit down and get more clarification from Mr.
But still, just an email out, hey, listen, we got this letter today. We're working on it.
Again, I, I, I'll go forward.
Mr. Goslin, if I, if I may read this into the record, okay?
Mark, here you go. Want it?
No, no, I'm reading it to you. I'm reading it to the citizens of the town of West Warwick.
You're sitting here pointing the fingers at me. I, every letter I, you know how many letters I get a week?
Alright.
I can give you a hundred letters a week, don't tell me.
And how many of them affect the entire town?
And then I can send you a letter and I don't even get a response.
Mr. Goslin.
I always respond.
Alright, alright, guys.
You've ever sent me and did not respond to.
Okay, I just wanna read this.
Anyone in this town who's ever sent me an email or a letter or a phone call, you'd send me, you'd show me where I did not respond once.
April twenty, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the town received it on the twenty-seventh. David Gosling Jr., Town Council President. Dear Mr. Gosling, this letter serves as notice to the Town Council of West Warwick. Not Mr. Gosling, to the Town Council of West Warwick that at its meeting held on the fifteenth of March, the Retirement Board of the Employees Retirement System of the State of Rhode Island discussed the circumstances surrounding the pension benefit of Colonel Knott. Okay, and I have no problem with you do it. After discussion, board members reluctantly voted to approve Mr. Knott's pension application as they had concerns about his pension eligibility giving the critical status of the West Warwick Pension Plan as expressly recognized in the enabling legislation allowing West Warwick to participate in the MERS plan. Okay, and it, it's the bit about West Warwick remain on the path, path of fiscal help. To that end, the board specifically voted, and it goes about approving the application. This went to the town council and the fact that you withheld it from at least forty percent of the council speaks. Okay, so sixty percent. You took it upon yourselves when it's addressed to the town council.
I just told the council what I'll do from going forward. Thank you, have a good night. But, but the last paragraph says, I trust that this communication will be provided to the town council. This is addressed to you. I trusted that you were on the rest of us.
It'll be from going forward, every letter gets to you guys, sorry. I was trying to get answers before I sent it to you.
You had two meetings after you got that letter and you didn't comply.
Yeah, I still waited for Mr. Karpinski, which we reached out to last week, hasn't come back to us. So I'll address that tomorrow.
This, this whole arguing and yelling thing and then throwing that thing at another councilman?
I handed it over.
NG.
Huh?
Second of all, I sit back there and a lot of people sit back there. This three to two thing? No good. Alright, there's five councilmen here. You're all elected by taxpayers. Okay? There's no need for this non-transparency. We've been beating this down, this drum for six years about transparency. And it says in that letter, the questionable transparency, does it not? Or lack thereof? Quotation. One doesn't know, two doesn't know, you say three doesn't know. What's the secret?
There's no secret.
And why do you have it so long and never said nothing?
Like I said, I was waiting for a meeting with Karpinski to get answers before I could.
Because we disagree with the, we disagree with the letter.
So how come the whole council can't disagree? Why do you go to disagree and Miss Mary Beth disagree? But the, the five of yous can't have the discussion till all disagree. Right? Just like emails. You get an email, you're the town council president. That means you represent all five of you. All five of you should have the emails when it's, especially when there's a discussion needed. I get it, it's a rolling forum when you do that, but you can do it individually.
Goes through the clerk.
You can't.
It goes through the clerk who puts it out to us, just like Mr. Wiley's email.
It's not, at the end of the day, it's not fair.
Just, just like Mr. Wiley's email, the very first one he sent, she sent it out to us and says, what do you guys think? I emailed her back, I think it should be put on the agenda. Right, Sarah? So I respond to everything, including that. And then where it goes from there, that's where it goes. I can't control where it goes beyond that.
And then, you know, a lot of the topics up here, I'm at the point now where I, I could give two shits because it's the same thing over and over again. But you can sit back there, any taxpayer can sit in his room and know ninety percent of the votes is three to two.
I disagree with that.
Oh?
I'll have all the votes for you within the next week.
The only reason, I'm gonna go down another path. The only reason you fought hard not to get my father in is because your drum on your foot was right there for that third. But we'll leave it at that.
You did that for him, not for me. You handled his election.
Mr. Gosling, one more thing. Since this letter.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what. I'll handle his next one when he's born. And he's gonna put him in.
Since you said you, this is a public document, it's on the website. You said you disagree with this. I would ask that at the next meeting, if you discuss this, you identify. you identify for the taxpayers of West Warwick exactly what is incorrect in Karpinski's letter. He sent it at the direction of the board, not as Frank Karpinski, at the direction of the board.
Because he reports to a board. Any other public comment? There are none? Jeff, did you wanna fill us in? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.